Hi, everybody. Welcome to the April 8 meeting of the Arlington School Committee. As people come in, I'm going to go ahead and do our script. Let's see. Good evening. This open meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, in order to mitigate transmission of the virus, we have been advised and directed to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. In this meeting, the Arlington School Committee is convening by Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Some attendees are participating by video conference accordingly. Please be aware that others may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured, but according to all the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard. We recommend members of the public follow the agenda as posted on Novus. I will introduce each speaker. Please remember to speak clearly. For any response, please wait until the chair leaves the floor to you. If members wish to engage in close with other members, please do so through the chair. All votes taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So let's do our attendance, starting with the committee, Ms. Exton here. And Mr. Carden is going to be late. Dr. Allison Ampe, I don't see her yet either. Mr. Thielman.
Here.
Mr. Schlickman.
Good evening.
Mr. Heiner.
Here.
And I am here. So we have a quorum, and I see Dr. Allison Ampe is here. Dr. Bodie.
Here.
Dr. McNeil.
Here.
I see Ms. Fernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Ego.
Here.
Elmer.
Here.
Dr. Jenger.
Here.
And I think that's everybody who we're expecting. Okay, great. So the first item on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Fitzgerald said that there was nobody who had signed up tonight for a public comment. So shortly, we're going to turn to the first agenda item, which is Dr. Bodie and counsel around pool testing. But I wanted to start and take my three minutes of public comment tonight. This is my last meeting as chair of the Arlington School Committee. I became chair like 10 years ago, or at least that's what it feels like. It was 10 months, but it feels like it was 10 years back in June, took over from Mr. Carden. And I'm delighted to be passing along to Mr. Heiner, as expected, at Monday night's meeting. So it's been a really, really long 10 months. It's been a very hard, it's been a really challenging time for our schools. And it's been an extremely, it's been, it's been an extraordinary experience for me to be the chair of this committee during this time of such extraordinary upheaval and change in how we're delivering education across Arlington. And I have learned so much from all of the people that we have been able to work with and see leading our schools, members of the committee, obviously, but also Dr. Bodie and her team, all of our principals and administrators. We've never seen so much of them during my time on this committee. We've never seen our principals as much as we have over the last 10 months. And so I have, it's just, it's really been such a privilege and an honor for me to be able to learn so much from them and, and you know, just, you know, think about and talk about how we are around each other and how we treat each other. So I, you know, I'm really, I'm really proud of the work that we've done as a committee over the last 10 months. I am so grateful to Ms. Fitzgerald for really keeping the ship afloat for all of us and keeping us in line and making sure that we're organized and following the rules. And we've had some good laughs along the way. So I've been really, I've been really appreciative of that. She's been so gracious with me and given us so much of her time. And also, you know, Rob and Rod and Michael, Dr. McNeil, Mr. Mason, Ms. Elmer, Mr. Spiegel, Kathy's whole team, you guys have all been so generous with your time with me. There have been many times where I've been confused or not sure what's happening. And, and you have all been so willing to explain to me and, and bring me in and let me know what's happening. And I have so enjoyed working with all of you in this capacity over the last 10 months. You know, again, I've, I've learned so much from you and from how you work and how you do your work. And I will certainly take that with me as a committee member as we move forward. And then finally, Dr. Bodie, you know, we have known each other for many years. We've worked together on the committee. This has been an extraordinary time to work together as chair and superintendent. I, I don't think that this was certainly not what I expected when I ended up where I did in the, in the line of succession for this committee. And I know that it wasn't certainly what you expected when you announced your retirement a couple of years ago. So I have felt a lot of empathy for, but also appreciation for you and for your leadership and for, you know, how we've been able to do this together. And so I, I know that, you know, the next few months, you will continue as you have always been. And I will miss our conversations, but I know that, you know, we will continue in, in your very, very capable hands for the next few months. So thank you so much to the committee for your patience and graciousness as we've moved through this. I've never chaired a meeting in person and may never, which is actually just fine with me. I feel like I came here and I did everything that I could possibly do for 10 months. And I'm more than happy to step away and, and look forward to Mr. Heiner being the chair. So thank you so much. I want to move on to the first agenda item, which is pool testing. And Dr. Bodie has an update for us from her conversations with Mr. Heim and just their thinking around pool testing in the district. So Dr. Bodie, you can go ahead.
Well, thank you. But I really do need to, before I move into the report on this, thank you. We've had, I don't know if we can figure out how many hours we've talked this year, but a lot. And I've enjoyed the conversations. I appreciate so much your leadership during this time because you've done it with these means of a lot of grace, sense of humor, and there's just been a very good feeling about all of that. So thank you to, thank you as well. It doesn't mean we can't continue to talk. But yes, it's been a very challenging year for everyone. And I have to say, I think we've done a pretty darn good job of how we've gotten through this year. And, you know, thank you to, you know, and you and Mr. Thielman are writing a post, which I think says a lot too about the confidence of the community in terms of how the school committee has been a partner and a leader as we've gone through this year. So thank you to you as well. And I'm sure there's going to be many more kudos to you Monday night, yes, probably so, and maybe even tonight. So thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. So for pool testing, yes, I have had a conversation with Mr. Heim on this issue. In fact, more than one in the last few weeks. So the issue is whether we should mandate pool testing for students that are in person. And let me pre-see before my conversation about that is that one of the things that the Department of Education has said to districts who participated in the state program and who are receiving these shipments of binex for follow-up and for testing is that we cannot require students to, it can't be mandate. We can't require students to take the pool, the pool test. Now, does that mean that you can't mandate it? It's a more nuanced answer on that one, and it's, it's complicated. And I think that at this point, it would probably be wiser to continue our efforts in terms of, you know, encouraging parents to have a consent for their child that be pool tested. And I will say that, you know, a combination of this, our encouragement on the meeting, the principles, and I understand there's been some social media around this as well. The percentages have really improved a lot. Literally, this is hot off the presses today because we wanted to include this, the results from this week. So I sent you for each one of the elementary schools. But if you look at K5 altogether as a group, it's a 90% participation. Yes, would we like to have 100%? Yes. And we're going to continue to encourage parents to do this, to sign the consent form. In fact, it's a little bit late, but the February newsletter went out because it takes a little bit of time to, you know, as a follow-up to that month. But I also put in that newsletter the links for both K5, 6, 6, 8, and the high school for parents to sign a consent form. At Gibbs, the percent is 83%, which is up from the last time. And I think the most spectacular rise is with odds in middle school, which has gone from 70% to 93%. So it, we are moving in the right direction in terms of the percentages. At the high school, as you know, we mandated pool testing for all athletes. And so in the fall two season, which is the third season of this year presently in, we have a couple hundred students, a little more than that, who are being pool tested weekly. When we get to spring athletics, that number really jumps up. There's going to be over 400 students that will be pool tested weekly. So there is also a plan for other students who are not athletes to be pool tested. And you're, we can talk more about that after we hear the report in what the plan is for the high school to return to a full-time in-person instruction. But I'm really very pleased with these results. We want to, you know, next time I report on this, I'm hoping, and maybe right after vacation, we'll see more of a jump than even this. But at any rate, I think at this juncture, because it's a little bit more complicated, that we just simply not go forward at this point with any mandate with respect to pool testing. So that's basically where, where the issue is and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Bodie. Questions for the committee around this? Great. So seeing then, so, you know, I appreciate so much the efforts of the principals to encourage families to sign up. I do think that it helps to send out the, I know that some do and some don't, to send out the pool testing results each week. Even if they're negative, it's still good news. It's nice to get them. And so I think it, you know, just helps people remember that it's, that it's happening. And, and, you know, it encourages people to continue signing up. So I hope that we can continue to drive those numbers up 90% at, across K5 is great, but there are some schools that are lower and some that are much higher. So I think we want to, you know, just keep driving those, driving that participation up because it's such an important part of the mitigation strategies that the district has invested in to keep everybody safe at school. So.
Yes, and we will continue to do that. I will say the elementary numbers also include in the base, the returning students from remote this week. Actually, there was a, something I sent out to all staff, but maybe interesting for those listening, really what our, our pool testing has looked like. We have processed to date, well, actually to the end of March, 2,150 pools, which means that this represents nearly 20,000 individual samples. And of those 2,150 pools, only nine pools were positive. So the, you know, the, it's partnership with everyone. Parents aren't sending their children to school sick. We have great protocols in place for safety. And I think all of these things are working to keep everyone safe as we go forward. So thank you. And by the way, Dan Sheehan, who's the interim director for technology for both town schools is joining us this evening as well.
Great. Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. Dr. Bodie, when you spoke with council, did you ask about the possibility of doing it as an opt-out as opposed to opt-in? It's not mandating, but saying you're in unless you opt out.
Um, I think that that can be a school committee decision if you want to do that. We've done that with other kinds of permissions. And this, you know, we have that on our portal for different things. But they are different permissions for, you know, getting pictures in the newspaper. That's different. To be honest, we did not talk about that. But I think that that is sort of in that narrow range of would Desi think that we are mandating it by that process? But you know what? I can follow up with that and let you know when we get, maybe even Monday night, I can, I can let you know if, if we have an agenda item for new business, which I think we do. Or maybe, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else on this item? Great. Okay. So the next one is, is a really beefy one. I'm, I'm trying to talk while we wait for Dr. Jenger to come back. Here he comes. And I put all of your items, Dr. Jenger, in here altogether. We have Italian, we have heterogeneous classes, we have semesters, and we have full return. So we could basically be here till tomorrow, probably, if we gave all of these items their due. But I think a couple of them are just sort of brief updates for the, for the committee and the community around where you guys are on this. And then the full return plan is obviously the, the crux of the whole thing. So I defer to you on how you want to, how you want to work through this list. You're on mute, unfortunately, although we do very much want to hear what you have to say.
Let's go from small to big because I, otherwise we will get to the end of full return and I will not even remember what we were going to say about the other ones. So let me just start with Italian. So there's a longer explanation kind of of where we are in the direction with Italian. But the, the simple version is the Italian program is the only language that we teach at the high school that does not have a pipeline going into it. And we've been building out on the Italian over, I think it started right as, right as I came in, so eight or nine years. And what we've been seeing over the last four or five years is that the, the numbers have shrunk. And more importantly, what we find is that when you get, let's say, 20 freshmen in, there's a two-year graduation requirement. So you'll usually go 20 to about 18 the next year. The third-year students don't have to take it, but it's a requirement or an expectation in many state schools and many other schools that you take three years. So the numbers drop down at that point to about 15. And by the fourth year, we regularly have sections of 10, 8, 12. We try really hard not to run sections that are under about 18. Sometimes we do because as, you'll see, there's a pipeline going into it. We've made a commitment to those students or because we're trying to build a program or because we're trying to build it into another pipeline. But over the last four or five years, we've been looking at this pattern in Italian and seeing that it doesn't sustain the numbers. So it becomes an expensive program to run and a program where we have not made, until students arrive in high school, a commitment. So if a student, you know, doesn't have the option to take Italian one when they get to the high school, they didn't take another class. If a student's taken Mandarin one in sixth grade, our expectation is we really have to provide the full program, you know, six through 12, because that student has made the commitment of time. We've told them we were going to have a program and support that over that time. So as you guys saw, the Italian one option, and there are years when we, for example, don't offer Mandarin one at the high school because we don't have enough interest. We do offer Mandarin two because students are coming out of the middle school. So in the program of studies, we did not include Italian one this year. There was not a lot of conversation. I was not at that meeting. But subsequently, there were some folks that contacted, I know you and me and Dr. Bodie, who really felt strongly about their interest in Italian. So we reviewed the program. We went over the numbers. And we decided to put it back in the program of studies for this year and to offer that for, for freshmen. But in order to be able to maintain that program, we're looking to have 20 freshmen enter so that as we can see, you get that 20, 18, 15. And we want folks to understand that if we're having numbers in the neighborhood of 10 or 12 in four years, we may not offer Italians four, that we can't really make that commitment right now. And we want folks to understand that. But our goal, and this is important, is not to eliminate Italian as a fifth language at the high school. We're trying to have as many rich language options as possible. One of the ways in which Italian was sort of envisioned as we went forward was as an opportunity. You know, it's the, it's the fourth European Romance language that we teach in the high school, if you count Latin as a Romance language. And so what we had been looking at in our long-term plan was next year and then the year after, to look at offering what we call Italian intensive, an option, an option that some schools have experimented with. And the idea is a student who's taken two or three years of another language could either double up or transfer into Italian one-two. And the idea of that, it's a one-year class that prepares you to go on to the second class in college. If you only took Italian one, for example, right now as a senior, when you went to most colleges, you'd have to retake Italian one because there wouldn't be a college class that would fit into the amount of content you had. So the simple, that was a long explanation, but the simple answer is we put Italian one back in the program of studies. Unfortunately, I think Ms. Morgan pointed out to us, I guess the letter did not go out from the middle school. It's now gone out. We will leave the program of studies open. If somebody calls us the day after it closes and says, I didn't realize that was out there, well, we'll open it back up for them. But if folks are interested in taking Italian, they should go into their requests and make sure that they request Italian one so we can get an accurate view of the numbers and interest. So that's Italian. Do we want questions about Italian before I go on to heterogeneous grouping?
Sure, because otherwise we'll forget where our questions are about Italian. Does anybody have any questions about Italian? Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. I was wondering if it's not possible to do a combination of Italian three and four, which would bring up your, I mean, they, they have to readjust the course, but it'd bring up your numbers, it would offer the ability to continue the languages for the people who wanted to, and it would keep, keep the classes going.
So I will say that that is something we have done in past years in order to keep the program functioning. You know, the numbers still get problematic if you've got two sections of 12. It's not a long-term great plan, right? And I know our Italian staff have really not wanted to do it in terms of the way they feel like it works. One of the other challenges of the Italian program is, you know, it never gets to AP because we don't have students coming in at that level. We have a much lower participation in honors level. Very few students take it for the honors level, level one and two. So there's a lot of ways in which it's hard for us to create a program that doesn't have the full commitment to the district all the way up through the middle school. But it's a conversation. We've now got a year to continue to have a conversation about. And, you know, we should probably come back to that early as something that's not waiting for the program of studies since clearly there's an interest there.
And my one question, Dr. Jenger, on this was that the email that we got from Mr. McCarthy didn't say that, that Italian, I, I'm not, my kid's not going to take Italian, but that the direction was to email Ms., to email Don Carney or Don, I'm looking for her name here. Yeah, Don Carney, to put their names on the list if the course is offered, but that it's, it doesn't imply that it is possible to select it in Power School right now. Is that what you're intending to?
It is my, my understanding is that both of those things are true, that it is possible to select it. But I think some folks have put in their submissions and may not be able to go back in again.
Okay. So, but the directions that are in the email from Mr. McCarthy to email Don, email Don Carney is the way to go for people who are interested in taking Italian.
Follow Mr. McCarthy's directions always.
That's what I do, but just, you know, double checking. All right, great. Anybody else for Italian? Great. All right. What next, Dr. Jenger?
So I don't have a long conversation about heterogeneous. We made a commitment to send out a whole bunch of surveys. We got those surveys just about written, and then we started working on the return, which came right after that. So the surveys have gone out to sort of get information about next year. But in the conversations that we've been having and planning those surveys with the staff, talking within district level, we made a determination that although we haven't had that longer conversation that I promised, we're really not prepared at this point to do the heavy lift, to do heterogeneous grouping next fall, or to be perfectly honest, semesterized classes. So in the surveys that have gone out to eighth-grade parents, eighth-grade students, and then high school students and high school parents, the notes explain that what we're really trying to get is people's input and feedback so we can look at the experiences we've had. We've gotten pretty good responses at the high school, particularly from parents. But we really do encourage folks to, to get in there. We would like as much feedback as possible so we can feel like the feedback we have is representative. And what we are seeing in the high school experience, which is a lot of what we were really interested in, right? Our students have now had experience with heterogeneous grouping, with semesterized classes, with different uses of remote instruction. There were a couple of other pieces with longer block classes. And so it was really helpful to see how different folks engage in it. And, you know, there's a, there's a, I guess what my simple version, and we'll come back and I'll present on the, those responses next time, whenever you'd like me to. But after the staff have had a chance to go through those and talk about what we're doing with them. But we are seeing a sort of a modestly positive majority, sort of the hump is more in terms of people having had positive experiences at the high school with, particularly with heterogeneous classes. And at the same time, what you see is a lot of concern about it at the eighth grade. You know, so it's like one graph looks like this and one graph looks like that. So clearly, in terms of understanding why we're doing it, how we're doing it, communicating that out, making sure the teachers are prepared and able to speak to it, that's some work we really have to do.
Great. Questions for the committee around heterogeneous classes? Just the info that was presented this evening. Okay. Semester schedule.
Semester schedule.
Whether we're going to do semesters or.
Oh, that was this, I think I just said that. That was a note.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, the, the simple answer right now is that we will look at the information that we get back from the surveys and have a conversation with the teacher, teachers. But at this point, the larger lifts are on things like semesterized schedules and heterogeneous classes as the requirement for all ninth graders or not, things we're planning on pursuing.
Great. All right. Full return for all the marbles.
So I always struggle with, you know, you wrote it all out, and now do I have to talk through it all? But what I'm going to do is kind of talk through a little bit of the, sort of the preamble to that memo, which is the table. I apologize to folks, especially folks at home, who are trying to read the table, which is trying to do two things at the same time. One, summarize the plan that we are proposing, but also putting in there the sort of comparison option so people understood why we were proposing that plan. I hope folks, folks so far seem to have understood that part. I've gotten some good questions in the last 24 hours, some of which I've updated actually in the memo and which will continue to update as we build things out going forward. But just by way of sort of context, I mean, one, you know, this is the fourth time, I think, this year at least, where I'm presenting a proposal about a completely new way of pivoting instruction in the next month on relatively short turnaround. And that's been a real challenge, obviously, particularly for our teachers. We've had to figure out a new format. And I think one of the things we were discussing with the teacher group, I said, look, I was a teacher. Moving across the hall is a major disruption in the middle of a semester because everything is where I wanted to do, and I maximize every second of my day. So to move the schedule, the time, 10 minutes here, five minutes there, is, is a big thing to ask. And I will say, one, that I'm very proud of the work the staff have done in terms of responding to that challenge and rising to that challenge and keeping our students engaged. I'm extraordinarily proud of our students who have kept on coming and plugging away and being engaged, worried and stressed very much, but really engaging in that. but really engaging in that. It's, it really is a testament to what a strong school we have. And it's been a privilege, I'll be honest, to lead and carry this community in this school through the time. And I am excited about the prospect of having kids back in the school. It's, it's, you know, the emotions are difficult because it's also an awful lot to do. And for many folks, folks were saying, you know, to do this with six or seven weeks left, there'll be about seven weeks left in the year when we come back, is it worth it? And so I guess what I want to say is this, I mean, we have remained, and this is to the community and to you in terms of my perspective, and I think with the perspective, we want to bring them to this. We've remained predominantly remote this year, primarily because of space issues. And those are primarily created by the six-foot distance and a building that was already overcrowded. We were about 90-plus percent capacity going into this fall before any of this happened because of the small building. And well, not really the construction project, but the space. So now we have a change and we have had throughout the year, I think a tacit agreement with the community that when we could return larger numbers of kids or an in-person, when we could do so safely and logistically, that we would make every effort to do so. And to me, that's why we're here today, because we've had that commitment. And so we now have this CDC and state guidelines and the research that shows that this three-foot chair-to-chair distance really is something that appears to be safe to do and that we can do safely. We have low levels of community transmission, which are one of the requirements for that, according to the CDC at the high school level. We've repaired the ventilation. And, you know, people keep asking about the ventilation because that was a big conversation in the fall. Ventilation is now working. Where it's not working, we're not using those spaces. We have overwhelmingly vaccinated staff and we have testing as an option in place that really helps us to keep things safer. Those things make me comfortable saying to the staff and to the students, come on back, we can make this work. It's not going to be easy. We'll still be fitting like a Tetris model exactly into the building. You know, I remember when we did the Tetris model the last time and we said we got 90% of the way there, three feet chair-to-chair gets us 99% there. Like it gets us to where we can do it, but it is going to be a really tight squeeze. And I, we know we can do it, but it's going to be a squeeze. So the determination, and this is a question, right? For many folks, we have been doing well academically. We, you know, the failure rates have not gone significantly up. The, the grades have continued to be relatively strong, actually somewhat higher. Attendance continues to be consistent with past practice. Student stress is much higher than usual. But the determination to return to per in-person comes from the belief that that in-person instruction for the majority of students is worth a disruption to the academic and the existing programs. And I think that's an important thing. That that really high level of student stress and concern is something that lots of people are telling us is worth this disruption, but there will be some disruption. And so in the next seven, eight weeks, what we're focusing on primarily in putting our bet behind is building relationships with kids and being safe and getting them back into school for the interpersonal piece of instruction. And our teachers, and I want to say this, are aware of the challenges, including both groups. And I'll talk about why we're including both groups. And we're going to work hard to keep those connections and engagement. It's going to be a change since the current model, and this is the thing, the current model really maximizes the remote experience. Right? Like everyone has gotten themselves set up to do this really well. And when you split that up, it adds a new dimension. But people really are going to work very hard and I have great faith that we will be able to make it work. Many other middlesex league high schools have been doing this and are doing this in comparable ways, many of them with, with comparable technology. And so they are able to do it. They won't tell you it's easy, but they're able to do it effectively. So the plan, the current plan, the plan that we are proposing keeps students with their current teachers, grades and expectations. And we think that's valuable, not just to the students who choose to come in in person, but to the students who choose to remain remote. Because if we were to split, when that's the whole point of that sort of first column, if we were to have to split to create a remote academy, we would have to pull 20% or it's looking more like 15% at the moment. But in all of our other documents, it's been about 20%. We would have to pull those students out of other classes. And that would require pretty mu- not pretty much, it would require every single class to be reconfigured. Some would have to be collapsed to create other sections. And an enormous number of classes would essentially not be able to run because they couldn't run for both programs. So, and I'll just give an example. The most commonly offered class is freshman English. There's about 17 sections. Eight or nine one semester, eight or nine the other semester. So this semester, there's about two classes every period. So in order to accommodate 20% of the students, you'd have to shut down two of those sections, redistribute those kids across the other six sections and take the kids out of those other sections and move them in. So everybody's getting new kids and kids are moving to new periods, which, you know, and imagine that's happening in every single class. And then when you look at art classes, you know, we have one section of painting. We don't have two or three of those. So students are going to end up in art. And, you know, they'll be in-person art and out art because we couldn't offer all the different programs. All the APs, all the standalones, computer science, you name it, almost all of those would have to go one way or the other or be simplified. So it would be a significant change, a break in relationships, a break in routines. We don't think that's good for anybody in terms of their social emotional health, whether they're at home or in person. So that's why we made that decision. And so there are a lot of logistical challenges to work through. I've tried to hit the highlights as I go through the memo. Each one of those highlights has, you know, a memo being written behind it and a lot of logistics to go through. And we've been working in the past month, as soon as we heard that this was the direction we were going, to be primed with the list of questions and the list of decisions. But we can't really move forward with the final decisions until we A, had an agreement with the teachers to change the way that they were teaching. And B, until we had really a deadline to work towards and could start asking parents to make the commitment. So it was sort of a chicken and egg. And now we're moving very quickly forward. So I'll, I'll ask a question. I'll pause for a second because I could now bore you to tears going through the memo and sort of hitting the points. But there's a lot of them and I'm not sure that you necessarily need all of them. So would you like me to sort of hit the two or three? I think the ones people have been the most interested in has been, have been. Well, we've had a little question about lunch. We've had some questions about. Well, yeah, to some extent, I feel like if I went through all of them, I'd kill you. So can people, can you give me a sense of how you'd like me to proceed to go into the weeds, as it were?
I think, you know, address lunch because I suspect people have questions about that certainly. And then, you know, I think probably the easiest is to give, when, to give the committee a chance to ask the questions and let that drag because I don't, I don't want to speak for them necessarily because what I'm interested in may not be what they are. So I think lunch, there's no way lunch isn't going to come up. So let's do lunch and then see what other people want to hear about. Does that work for you?
I'm going to, I will go through this and I'll hit lunch, but I'll go through what I think sort of a quick overview then. So one, the plan that we have for phasing in is to, to take that, the PD day, which we've been holding in reserve and put that on Wednesday, May 5th. So that is 10 days after we return from break. That would give the teachers an opportunity to really make sure everything is set up. And then our plan is to bring first just the seniors in. So the seniors would come in in person, other students would attend remotely. That one is something that people have been asking for all year, an opportunity for just the seniors to come in and see each other. It also gives us an opportunity to look at how the movement patterns work when you put them in place to explain them and review them with the seniors who I think are really going to be leaders of this in the school. And then the next day, which is Friday, we're planning to bring the freshmen and transfer students in, students who have really never been in the building. Trying to find your way around the building on a good day is challenging, but in a one-way pattern, when you're not supposed to backtrack and you're masked is something we want them to be able to do in a building that's not super full. Plus, we'll have just trained the seniors, so our bridge builders and senior volunteers can be there to help them out. We're looking for folks to make the decision, as we've talked about by Tuesday. I know it's a fast turnaround. If people don't contact us, we will go with their default, which is their current status under the departmental shifts. Because we need to fit classes in based on their size. Folks who are currently in the school and in-person programs, those folks are, will stay in their programs as they are. They should tell us that they're opting in when they fill out the form. So PE classes, remember Wednesdays has been a special PE time. So the plan is to shut down ninth grade PE at the end of this quarter, which will be Wednesday. The ninth graders have finished their wellness curriculum. They accelerated in preparation for that. So the ninth graders would finish their ninth grade PE requirement and get that credit met. And then juniors and sophomores who are signed up for PE classes are being shifted into the regular program. So it's a four-day-a-week schedule. It's basically the same schedule we've had before. I'll pull that up actually for a second because folks had asked about it. Let me just pull that up. Can I, do you mind if I share my screen here for a sec?
Go for it.
All right. So people have asked for it and I understand it's buried in there. So this is the bell, the planned bell schedule. It looks an awful lot like what we're doing now. It's got 85-minute periods with a five-minute break. We'll be using some buffer time in that period to, to shift people through the hallways. So it'll really probably be more like 80 minutes of instruction and five minutes of getting everybody sorted out to get from class to class. The plan, and we'll look at that at this point, is to have four lunches. But with PE, in the normal schedule, PE classes meet twice a week. And so the plan is to get rid of the, the P1 in the middle of the day, which created that big break. We don't need that because nobody's going home anymore. And so to have the four periods and PE classes will go into students' open blocks if they have them. So those students right now are being scheduled into open block classes and then they will be contacted if they don't fit into those and we'll have conversations. And once there, there's room available, we'll open up PE classes to everybody. There will be in-person PE classes and remote PE classes. Those won't be blended. So going back to here, I'm going to skip over the performing arts because it's not really a big change. We've talked about ventilation. There's a lot of information about how we'll do hygiene around COVID. Cool testing. But let me go back to lunch. That looks like the big one to hit. So lunch. So the plan is for us to run four lunch periods. If there's 1,000 kids in the school, that's 250 kids eating lunch at a time. And that's still a lot of kids to space six feet apart, sitting down at a table. That's considered a mask break because they're taking their mask off. So they're not supposed to be walking around. Any student is avail, is, has eligibility, remember, to free lunch. The students will be able to pick up lunch in the cafeteria. Our plan is to use the cafeteria space, the blue gym space, all of the courtyard. And in the courtyard right now, we have a large tent. I think it's 30 by 60. It's a pretty large tent. In addition to that, we have under what are called the links, a few thousand square feet of covered space. And we've actually got patio heaters that are in there if we start to still have cold weather after that. So there is some outdoor covered space as well. And we are letting students, and this has been something we've been doing all year long. When students are not assigned and lunch would count, they can leave, they can go outside. So they could go out to the field or the parking lot. Or, you know, they could go for a walk during that time. And so that's something we've been doing all year long. They can be, otherwise they can be in study hall spaces, which will have in the pit or old hall or in the gyms during other periods. And sorry, people are walking behind me. And I lost my train of thought with, with walking. Yeah. But so that's, that is the plan there. And the way we do for lunches is students, in this, we've done this in the past, usually it's been three. Some students have lunch right before their C-block class. Some go to C-block class for half an hour, then have a 25-minute break. Some go for 50 minutes and then have a 25-minute break. And then some go after their class. So there's four lunch blocks with a little break in between them to let the students transition. So I think the other big piece, which I've gotten lots of questions on, is how does this look for a blended class? And, you know, I think what I'll start with is the simple, right? Because kind of what you can expect. And then teachers have all kinds of creative ideas. They've talked about beyond that. But the basic setup that we're envisioning is that every teacher already has a MacBook. Every teacher already has a MacBook. And every teacher for a second camera has the basic setup will be issued a Chromebook. And so, and I've actually done some staff meetings run this way. So the teacher can be teaching like this with their main device in front of them. And their Chromebook as a secondary device can potentially be pointed at the class or potentially pointed at the whiteboard as a place to be. And they actually, I mean, there were other more expensive, fancier cameras, but actually that setup really works pretty well. In addition, we've purchased these sound lips. We've been using them for the last semester, which are just hip-worn with a little personal mic that talks like this, that raises your teacher voice. So when you're masked and trying to be picked up by a microphone and trying to be heard by a class, you can be heard pretty clearly. And those work very simply. You just put them on and turn them on. We've asked teachers, they can sign them out or we can issue them to a teacher if they want to have them. So that basic setup, remember, you've got an 80-minute-long class allows a teacher to be teaching in person. Students who are, you know, watching at home are either projected up on the whiteboard or the PowerPoint you're using is on the whiteboard or they're watching what you're writing up on the whiteboard over there. And there's a lot of configurations of that, but that's the basic setup. Now, in terms of envisioning that, there are things that are great about that and there are things that are challenging about that. One of the challenges is it's not a great setup to have lots of large in-person class conversations. If there's a lot of cross-talk in a whole class, the students at home, they may be able to hear. We have fancy microphones that we'll bring into folks that are doing that. But it's harder for those folks to see and participate. Most of the time, when you've seen teachers doing this kind of instruction, they stick with more of an interactive lecture or what's called IRE, where they ask questions and students respond to them. So they can then repeat or make sure the students at home heard or the students in person heard the students at home. And then when you want to have cross-talk among students, you transition to group work that then can happen amongst remote students on Zoom classes, on the Zoom or in-class amongst students. Now, another question that's come up, and Dan probably can speak to this much better than I can, but I can speak about it instructionally, is what is our capacity within the building? And so the idea there is you're not going to have 20 kids all on a Zoom call. But there's no reason to bring 20, you know, 20 kids into, 15 kids into the class and then have them all staring at the screen. What you're most likely to have is a couple of Zoom calls running here. You may run a couple of Zoom calls with students who are in-person or talking to kids who are remote. But for the most part, you're going to be running two to four Zoom calls in every classroom. And my understanding is that we have capacity for that. The big issue we have to work on is making sure that everything is maintained and stable. So that's kind of the main piece there. And we're looking to get videos and examples from other folks who've done in other schools. And I know our staff are already department by department reaching out because they're, they're very rapidly asking questions that are much more complicated, right? How do I run a lab? If we're doing a fetal pig dissection, which is a plan for biology, how do I make sure that I maximize the involvement of the kids at home? And so I know people are working in that direction. I think that is it. So questions?
Great. Dr. Jinger, can you stop sharing your screen just for right now so I can see? This makes it easier for me to see who's here. So I see Mr. Heiner. Go ahead, Mr. Heiner.
Thank you very much. First off, just a comment on the lunch. The idea of letting students be free to go out of the building makes me extremely nervous. I come up there once a week to sign the payroll warrant. The traffic behind the building is constant going on. It, the, the, the geography there is just not what it was a year ago. So I, I'd ask you to reconsider that and put some limits on it. There's trucks, there's vehicles going back and forth. There's a lot of stuff going on. That's just behind the building. A quick question, I guess I'd like to hear from Mr. Sheen. Do we have the capacity to do all this as far in the technology aspect to provide a consistent program?
Thank you, Mr. Heiner. What we've looked at, we do. We've, we've checked everything from our internet connection to our firewall to our in-school network and everything says we have capacity to do this. And everything says we have capacity to do this. We've worked with Dr. Jangar and come up with a model we think is acceptable and will work. Yes.
Great, thank you. And I don't want to speak for the rest of the committee, but I know that what question has been asked by several people. Do you need more from us to make things work? And I'd like Dr. Jenga to be aware of that. I'll stand corrected by any other members of the committee on that. Another question, you mentioned. Has there been a contractual change between the teachers and the school department with regard? Because my memory was. That we had agreed with the teachers not to do simulcast and remote at the same time. What you've suggested here is that I'm not opposed to it. Don't misunderstand. I just want to understand if we've changed the contract.
So and Kathy, Dr. Bodie can speak to this more than I can. In the memorandum of agreement, it says that teachers can volunteer to do so. They aren't enjoined from doing it, but we can't expect them to do so. And so the 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 letter of agreement, it's not a contractual modification, is the teachers agreeing. Through to to do this as a whole.
So for teacher, you've already contacted.
Speak to that.
All the teachers have agreed to to go forward. Volunteer, am I correct?
Well, yes, this, the question was put to the teachers earlier this week. And eighty percent of the teachers agreed that this. You know, given the two options, they agree to this option. And so, yes, we are the volunteering piece of it is going forward with the with the teachers. As Dr. Jenga said, the MOA that was agreed to back in September with the spoke made did not. Enjoying teachers from doing it, it just made it was not required. And so people, they just were choosing and that's we wanted them to make sure that they were on board with this choice. Because we have to choose one or the other. There's, you know, there's can't be anything in between of the two options.
I'm I'm sorry, I'm not clearing that. I thought we weren't having two options. We were having. One. The classroom was going to be a blending of the two. Am I correct?
Well, as Dr. Jango was saying. The other option would be to change all the classes.
Okay, but you just said that eighty percent have agreed to do it voluntarily, then. Simple mouth says twenty percent have not agreed to do it. So.
Well, that's correct, but the high school has to go one way or the other. We're either going to go with. The the blended or we're going to have to change everybody's schedule. And so it was really deciding which way the high school was going to go and, you know. Laying that for teachers to decide.
I don't want to believe in this, but. What I'm hearing is that. It was the choice was made, therefore twenty percent are not going to have the choice that was in the memorandum of agreement. Am I correct?
That's essentially correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Carden and then Mr. Fieldman.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Jinger, for all your hard work and doing this. I'm thrilled that we are at this point where. I didn't think we would be where we might actually get people back in the building. Just a couple of things, because. Because of the. The the challenging logistics, I would actually, you know, as as you're still planning, encourage you to think about additional senior days and that that week leading up to. The change, I think, just one day with the seniors and one day with the freshmen. You know, may not be sufficient to test to make sure everything's working well. And of course, the more time the seniors have. By themselves in the building, you know, the better experience they'll have because they're leaving early in June. So. Ask to consider that as you're continuing to plan. I actually disagree with Mr. Hayner. I mean, I I think it's an extreme year. We're going to have to trust our students to be responsible coming in and out of the building. And so I I'm glad to see that you're giving them that flexibility. And then. I I guess. I I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Fernandez, because. I I don't know how involved you were with this this agreement, but I guess, you know, the concern that we've heard from it from possibly indirectly from a teacher is that they're. They're not thrilled with this, you know, agreement. And I guess what is what is sort of the? You know. Obviously, we have to make a choice. We have to go one way or the other. Are are, you know, are are the teachers collectively okay? Or are we going to find out that there's going to be a couple of recalcitrant teachers who, you know, contractually, they're not obligated to do this? So that would that would put us in a difficult situation.
Do you want to take this one or?
Yeah, I can. I can give it a go.
Yeah, do your best.
Right. So I mean, this is a year of not ideal situations and having to accept not really being okay. So to say that we're okay, I don't I don't know that we go that far. But kind of the official position here is that eighty percent agreed to accept the change of language. And so because that's the majority, the union has agreed to sign it. So. I wouldn't say okay, but I I don't think there's a a large concern on our end in terms of the the agreement we reached.
Okay, great. And I I do appreciate the flexibility of the teachers. You know, this has been a very challenging year. They have to pivot once again. This this dual teaching is extremely challenging and, you know, fortunately for. At least for Arlington, we won't. We're only going to do it for a couple of months as compared to the whole year. It's been in some other districts. So I do appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Mr. Fieldman.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. And I want to echo. The words of other people on the on the committee and how grateful we are for for finally getting to a point where we can open up the school. I I just want to make a few points. In response to concerns that about the the students in the building project, when the. When the building. When our building team, our design team and our construction team and the building committee were planning for the year. We were planning for students to come back to school. So safety protocols are in place to make sure that the students will be safe. Coming in and out of the building and going out to the to the field for activities. And so I. I have a great deal of faith in Dr. Jangar, his staff, Mr. McCarthy, everybody in the team to make sure kids are safe when they go out for lunches or any other activity. And the construction team is very mindful of the fact that students are in the building. And in fact, students have been in the building over the past year. A small number of students, but students have been in the building and and the construction team has protocols in place that it is following carefully to be sure everyone is safe. So there's no evidence to the contrary. The second thing I want to say is. An eighty percent vote by anybody is a good sign of confidence. And so I think we need to recognize that eighty percent voted in favor of this change and that's a pretty substantial. So my question is. How we're going to treat? Any potential positive case is is. Is our protocol, what is the protocol going to look like? What is the decision going to look like? If there's a positive case of a student in the high school in a class, are you, is this going to lead to? Obviously, obviously that that student has to be quarantined. I get that. But for the fact that students are studying. Apart from each other, wearing masks, following safety protocols in rooms that are ventilated. What is our? What's our protocol going to be when 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 that happens?
So our current plan is, and these things change, right? We we got, this is four weeks from now. And we will fine tune this in regard to whatever the current guidance is. But our current expectation has been within an abundance of caution to to go beyond the within six feet for fifteen minutes rule. And so it's pretty much been our practice. And at the moment, it's our expectation. That if one student is in the school, the three classes that that student was in would be quarantined. All those teachers who are vaccinated. I believe don't need to be quarantined. The nice thing about this model is. We're set up for remote instruction. So the students could then participate remotely during that time and they would have to because they would actually be. In other classes because the kids cross cohorts and not staying with the same group of kids. If over time, you know, the district changes its larger view on that. To say within six feet, then we would start doing mapping of who's within the circle of that student. But at the moment, the plan is. That if a student is in place, the three classes that student passes through would be quarantined for the quarantine period. And that's one of the reasons why we are not planning on having homeroom. Because we don't want to create another twenty five, you know, kid group. As as people move through the day.
I would just encourage. You to study this. There are there are districts that have had, you know, at least a fifty fifty hybrid model in the high school. And I I just look around and see if that's the protocol that everyone has followed. I'm I'm not, I understand it's a it's a very safe protocol. And. And it's ultimately the decision important. It's actually an administrative decision. The school committee really doesn't have a role here, I don't think. But I would just encourage you to maybe study what other districts are doing to see if that's the best.
Yeah, and as we've talked to other districts, you know, it splits.
It does.
They go both ways. And one of the. You know, and some of why they split has to do with how disruptive it is, depending, depending on the different model.
There are districts that don't do that do not quarantine a whole cohort. They they do contact tracing and they make a decision based on their best judgment and. They've had good results. I would just, I would just caution, I would just ask you to look at other districts, give some thought to this. Because it could be very disruptive to. You know, quarantine three classes, a kid twenty seventy five kids.
We're down.
Okay, so.
This is my growing punch list right here.
I mean, there's a month to think about it, so I would just.
And it it's good to hear that that's a perspective coming from our school committee.
Thank you.
All right, I don't know if there was somebody after Mr. Jimenez. I see Mr. Schickman and then Dr. Allison Epi. Mr. Schippin, come in, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Janger. Looks like this is a lot of work and. Thank you for every pirouette that the staff has had to do over the course of this year. A couple of questions. First of all, I want to say that I do favor the open campus. Anything that gets kids out of the building. When they don't need to be in the building is a good thing. And. And and I. Encourage the use of outdoor space and and an open campus approach. Until we get through this this pandemic. Or until we get our outdoor. Space open in the new building. My question is, can I get a sense of? The vaccine, do we know the vaccination rate for teachers both at the high school and the rest of the district?
Well, where's school, I can say with some confidence. That any teacher who wanted a vaccination has has had an appointment scheduled at the very least. And I know because we spent a weekend crunching that out and making sure everyone was signed up.
Somebody else have an answer for the rest of the district where we stand on teacher vaccination?
Mr. Steve.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I don't have an exact number, but I I think that's been similar in every school and Jenna can probably speak to the Otis. And I know they were helping each other, the teachers. In every school and the PTOs have helped teachers and staff. Who wanted to get a vaccination appointment, get a vaccination appointment. And I think by now, most people. If not everyone who wanted to get a vaccination appointment has already had at least one and. Many have had both. So if they had the two shots.
Are we tracking this?
We're not. I mean, I think one of the things we wanted to be, we've encouraged it. We've and obviously the cooperation among our their teachers and staff has been amazing and most have really wanted it. But I mean, we haven't. We haven't gone that route to to track it. And I don't think most districts are, but. You know, it's it's just not something we have done to date.
I mean, you know, you can't ask it. You cannot. I don't think you can. It's a medical piece of information. They're not obligated to reveal it. So I did survey my staff to say. You know, who's vaccinated? Who's got an appointment and who needs an appointment? And I got a very, you know, a chunk of folks who needed an appointment that we spent the weekend. Getting people vaccinated. I know there were actually some extra vaccines. That following week so that people were able to do it as part of the school vaccinations. And then we've run through a few times, is there anybody left out there? So I would say with some confidence, I don't know how many people, there may be people in the building. Who have opted to not get vaccinated, although I don't think very many, but anyone who wants it has, I believe. Probably already got a first shot.
Yeah, that's just my my, I want to get a sense of where we're at.
You know, we're actually pivoting at this point. I mean, my new mode thing. Is two thirds of the high school students will be eligible to get shots. In a very short time. And so we're going to start ramping up, trying to make that be our next goal, which is to get the high school students vaccinated.
I I've heard lots of stories about teachers covering for other teachers who were traveling during the day to get a shot. And PTOs and other people helping schedule appointments and a lot of cooperation. A lot of support for the teachers. And I think that that's been really magnificent and I'm very appreciative. Of the folks who've been helping each other through through this part of the of the reopening. And I'm I'm very grateful. And if there's anything we need to do to help out, both in terms of getting kids vaccinated. Teachers through the vaccination, make making this work and keeping everybody healthy. You know, we definitely want to do it.
If anyone knows a way to get. Our local Board of Health first shots again, so we can start running the clinics at the high school, we will.
I'd love to get that done. That they they pulled it back. Maybe we get a letter out to. Appropriate folks requesting that we work with the Board of Health to vaccinate our high school students as soon as they become eligible. Thank you.
If I could just say, I if I could check the board, our health department is looking into that possibility. I don't know if that will ever come to fruition because of. They, you know, there are limited amount, the kind of vaccinations they could offer within town.
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing is, if there's any way we can support that, I want to know it because if if we can put pressure on. Governor, talk to our legislators, do whatever we can to make it happen. I I think it'd be good. And given that the the increase in vaccine supply. Is is in the pipeline and the president has said that. He expects. Everybody who wants a shot to be able to have had one. By June means that there's got to be a lot more supply in the pipeline. And if we can take advantage of that additional supply. To organize a clinic for our high school students. Wow, that that would be magnificent. I'd love to see that.
Dr. Allison Epi.
Thank you. My question is more for our staff, I mean, more for Dr. Bodie. And I guess Miss Sheridan, Karen isn't here, but it would have been for her. So. I understand that under the current CDC guidelines, if you just look at Arlington, we fall under the what's called substantial transmission. Category and that three feet is felt to be adequate spacing for middle for elementary and middle and high school. But if our numbers go up. We aren't that far away from the high transmission category. Right now, we're at fifty seven per hundred thousand. For a week and the high transmission is over a hundred per hundred thousand for a week. I'm wondering first, who is monitoring these numbers? And second, what I noticed, if we go into high transmission, the recommendations are either using cohorting, which we aren't doing and can't do. Or if we can't, we're back to at least six feet distance between students in classrooms. And so I just want to know. I understand right now that we're following the CDC guidelines, but I want to be sure that we're watching this. Going forward and when, you know, what are we going to do if that number hits that threshold? And. You know, how how is that going to roll out?
We are monitoring it. Cindy Sheridan Curran is our liaison to the Health Department. And as well as as one of our high school nurses as well. And we also have someone who is is also doing a lot of our stats for it, who's a who's a nurse in the district. So. That that is being followed. I think you're asking an excellent question is, what do we do if we get to that level? I think that it it's a. Uh, it may be more nuanced. Do we have it only be in the high school or is it the entire district? Do we have to go remote? You know, these are questions that. We can, we we know how to do that. And if we have to, we will. Right now, we do have a cohort ma- or a cohort model for quarantine. And so. I mean, what I mean by that is. If a student at elementary. Um, ha- is test positive, that entire class goes out because we cannot say that there hasn't been. Um, you know, that all the kids haven't been affected. That may decrease as we get to the upper grades. And I think that's something that. Um, the health department are looking at is to whether that can be modified. As we get, as as the students get older. Because it's not like, you know, they may be, you know, wandering around the room. Once a high school student is probably in their desk, they're probably not wandering around the room. Um, so. I can't tell you right now how that's going to be potentially changed from as we go forward. But. I do want to reassure you that that is being monitored. Um, in fact, there's a group of people that meet. At least three times a week. One of them who are discussing, that is the focus of conversation is. Cases and what's going on with respect to COVID in the town. Um, I think as if that starts going up. We will be certainly developing a a plan for how we're going to respond. Fortunately or unfortunately, we have a lot of play experience in pivoting this year.
Yeah, I'm I'm. Hoping that it doesn't, uh, but I note that. The numbers for middle sex. Put us firmly in the substantial transmission category and have for, I I mean, basically the last six. At least last four months, and I think probably more than that. Yeah, definitely more than that. So. It's not, I'm not asking this out of idle curiosity. It's. I'm still a little. Uncomfortable with the idea that we're essentially bubbling in Arlington and saying, well. We're okay. Never mind that everybody else right around us is having more problems, but we're okay. So we're going to do this. But I think that we need to be watching and and uh figure out what we're going to do if if it doesn't. You know, if if things. Um, if there's more transmission than we're expecting. So, thank you.
Okay, I'll just add one more comment. The transmission, uh, the positive cases in Arlington still remains. Just slightly over one percent. And I think it's partly what what towns and cities are making out the middle sex. Um, which has a difference. And you're right. It it there's a range within the the middle sex county and. We're just watching it, but we're also monitoring what's going on in our community as well.
Yeah, it's, I'd say it's not. When I say cases, I'm talking about the the number of cases that were. Identified and then doing the math to figure out what it is per hundred thousand. And you know, even if it's one percent, we're still in the substantial range. So.
Yeah. We we will.
All right, anybody else? Oh, Dr. Janger, look at that hand. Go ahead. Sorry.
So just. To point out apropos of this conversation, the last bullet point on the memo does talk about. When we would consider going remote and. I'm actually, I was just getting texts from our 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 actual high school nurse, Sarah Lee, has been tasked. To the Board of Health has been working with them really closely on this. And so not only are they monitoring and she monitoring. But she's someone we work with all the time. And so. Um, what I talk about at the end is that I think particularly at the high school, because the guidance from the CDC at the high school is different. Um. At the high school level, they say if there are high levels of community transmission, you should consider returning to six feet, which would occasion us needing to go remote. Um, and um. In in addition, I think that we are going to look at trying to figure out a metric or an indicator for what is a high level. Of presence in the high school if we're getting a high case positive. Um, and then obviously, if there's any evidence that we're getting it in clusters and it's being transmitted in the high school. If we can't modify our practices to make that safe, we'd have to deal with that. So those three things are things that we're going to sort of develop more guidelines on so that we are prepared when we come back. Um, you know, to to not be. Get a bunch of information and not have thought through how we're going to react to it.
Great, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Uh, Mr. Carden.
Sorry, I lost my cursor. Um, so uh, just following up on on Dr. Allison Apey's point. Um, we as a committee has never adopted the CDC guidelines as a standard that we are required. Or requiring our district to follow. This memo says when to consider going remote. Um, I don't support following the very conservative CDC guidelines. If Dr. Allison Apey wants to make a motion. To require that, then I think that's something we can consider. But I I don't think the message should be. From the committee that as soon as we go into the red as a town. Um, and that that's a complicated calculation because I don't know what population figure you're using, Dr. Allison Apey. Um, but it it's not a figure that I don't that I think our our health department is monitoring, Dr. Bodie. So it's 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 not something that you that. You're monitoring the transmission, which is great, but I don't think you're monitoring the specific calculation that Dr. Allison Apey is monitoring. Um, and I I I don't support using that as as a as a requirement to go remote again. Thanks.
Uh, Dr. Allison Apey.
Um. I am not prepared to make a motion off the cuff. Uh, but I will consider it for our next meeting. Uh. I was assuming that because we're agreeing to do the things. That the CDC, basically, I was seeing it coming down from the state that the state has said, okay. That we're following CDC guidelines now. And that's what we want you to be doing. That. That sort of implied that that's where we were going. But if it's not, that's fine. In terms of the calculation. Um, it's not a difficult calculation to do. You just look at the number of cases that we have in this into. Town and then look a week earlier and how many cases and the differences, the new cases in a week. And you figure out how many cases that is per um hundred thousand for the population. I can go through the math, but it's also on the CDC. Website on how to do it. And but Dr. Bodie, yes, this is a number. I think Mr. Carden picked up something that I hadn't realized. This is a number I think we should be following and uh. Dr. Jinger, I didn't see the bottom of your memo, so maybe it's in there. Uh, but. Uh, if not, this is something I think we should be looking at. And. Um, I can go into it offline. Uh, it it's not. It it's not rocket science. So, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Um, Ms. Exton.
Do we need to pass a motion for May fifth to be a PD day?
We do. Um, that was on my list. I was just not.
I'm sorry.
Because, no, no, not at all. No, no, don't be sorry. Um. It wasn't on the agenda. So, but I think we can do it as part of this.
There.
Item. What do you think? Go ahead, Dr. Bodie. What do you got?
We did not put it on the agenda intentionally because it was something we needed to present tonight. So actually, I think there's really two motions. Um, does everyone agree where we are going with the high school plan? Because that's. Of both, I think that was taken for the middle. Schools and as well for the elementary. That's one. And then two, no, we didn't, but we just heard it and said, okay. Okay, good. All right. But then you do need to vote on the planning day, which would be proposed, uh, the proposed day is Wednesday, May fifth.
Yeah, we 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 have lots of votes on planning days, something this committee takes very, our responsibilities around that very seriously. Um, so I I think, uh. Ms. Exton, since you brought it up, would you like to make a motion around the planning day and then we can discuss it?
Uh, I move that the school committee adopts uh, May, Wednesday, May fifth as a. Planning day for the high school teachers.
And. Right, okay.
Second.
Great discussion. Mr. Schickman.
Yeah, I I support this. Uh, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to say that the. This will be a no school planning day and uh in the motion, just to make sure we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's.
Are you good with that, Ms. Exton?
Yeah, thank you.
Great. And this will push out the last day of school for our high school students in line. With where we are at for our elementary and middle school students.
Can someone remind me what day that means?
Oh, come on. These are the hard questions. I think we're at Thursday. I actually get this wrong, but I think we're on Thursday of that week in June.
June twenty fourth.
Okay.
Yeah, we're at Thursday, June twenty fourth, eleven thirty AM release.
It was confusion. I thought I'd go right to the horse's mouth. I'll change it on the high school calendar right now.
All right, so uh, any more discussion on uh the planning day? Seeing none, uh, lost my list. Ms. Exton? Yes, Dr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Apey?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schickman?
Yes.
Your heiner?
Yes.
And I am also, yes. And we'll get a communication out to the. Community about that as soon as possible, correct? Because it's it's getting, it's getting, I guess our elementary PD day has happened, but it's getting, it's getting confusing with all these days. So we want to make sure that people, people know what's happening. Okay, great. Um, anything else on uh the high school? Dr. Allison Apey and then Mr. Schickman.
Sorry, I forgot to ask one of my questions. Um, Dr. Janger, going back to the open campus, I agree that it sounds like a good thing. Um, I also agree with Mr. Thielman that we plan to have students in the building. I'm attending school when we were building the high school, but we did not plan for open campus. And so I just want to think. Is there anything? That means there may be more kids going back and forth. Not in groups like classes or something like in the back of the to the fields and stuff. Is there anything that will make that better or safer? And I'm specifically wondering if you need like a field monitor or you know, some, I'm thinking playground monitor for high school students. You know, anything uh. Eyes in the back there uh to make this work better and more safe for our students.
So um. So first, I mean, one thing to under to realize is that since we've been doing the departmental shift, there's been at least a hundred students every hour. Coming and going out of the building, which is sort of more than would be usual because. Um, they're not usually all coming and going. So at any given period, under this model, there would probably be two, two hundred or so that would be unassigned. Most of those are probably going to stay in their in study halls or in the courtyards or other places because they're comfortable places to be. So I don't know that there's going to be a ton more foot traffic. We are trying to sort of, and two points. The building, as you know, is not well designed for stopping leakage. It has never been well designed for stopping leakage. There's fifty five doors. Um, and um, the new building is actually designed to limit it to two main points of entry. Um, which a lot of that design was intended to enable um an open campus if the community wanted it at that point. Because it's pretty easy to monitor kids going in and out. So what we are looking to do, um. When we do this and we're going to have to deal with the realities of the building is to. Funnel entrance and exit through the courtyard and then the uh column entrance. And we will have an adult there supervising. And we have talked about whether we would use QR codes to students sign in out of the building. So it helps us a little bit with contact tracing and knowing where kids are. We're already using scanners and doing that for signing into study halls. Um. Another set of eyes would always be welcome. We are right now posted for one paraprofessional to help us just with the general. Monitoring of the very large space and lots of kids. Um, to, so I will be honest, I am more concerned with kids congregating in unsupervised spaces. In the building than I am with kids getting run over by construction equipment. The, as 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 Mr. Thielman pointed out. The construction, the the plan has been to have kids in the building in an occupied building. The construction folks are very responsive. We will sit down with them before we return to in person to say, you know. You've been great around the smaller numbers, but we're going back to what we expected to be doing, which is a lot more kids around. So I think um. You know, more more paraprofessionals would always be great, but I don't know that we're limited right now by more than at this point. It's the ability to find folks that are well able to do it. So that we are, we do have plans to work in that direction.
Okay, thank you. Let us know if you need more hands there.
Uh, Mr. Schickman?
Uh, pass.
Anybody else? Great, seeing none.
I remember.
Got it. All right, we're ready. Go ahead.
Do we need a motion for the return dates?
We we didn't for for K, so.
Well, okay, I I just want to make sure we, so parents will be notified of all the changes in the uh PD uh PD day. Uh, thanks.
Anybody, Mr. Thielman?
I would just say by the vote we took, we basically took that vote to set the P day, PD day. With the assumption that school starts for seniors the next day. So we, I mean, we've kind of. Endorsed the plan in a sense.
Great, anybody else? Okay, super. Dr. Jager, thank you so much for giving us such a a solid presentation. Um, we're getting, we're getting. I do think we're actually getting better at this as a committee, like we started with elementary and then we had middle school. And I feel like we were, we were cruising along tonight. And I really appreciate your um. Your, your uh willingness to to work with what we had questions about. So that's fantastic.
There are many, many, many questions and, you know, it's helpful to get them because it helps us to clarify the process. I took much notes. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And we'll let you, we'll wave to you and say good night because it seems like there's a lot to do. And thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Um, the next item on the agenda is uh the extended school year programming. Um, so this was an agenda item that we did. Um, sort of, uh, so a brief presentation about what ESY looks like. Um, this was really helpful for me when Ms. Elmer did it last. Um, I think I looked back, Ms. Elmer, I think it was actually my first. Meeting as chair in June. So this is like a nice full circle moment. Um, and uh, it's it's, you know. Incredibly important programming for our students and for our families. And I think that it's really helpful for the committee to hear about it. Um, and to give the community the opportunity to hear any updates. Um, with how we're thinking about ESY for this summer. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for doing this.
Sure. That's why you were able to recall it so quickly and pinpoint the presentation. I'm I'm just going to share my screen, you know. See, it takes a second and. Can I get a thumbs up if you can see it? It comes up, okay, great. Um, all right, so um, as we mentioned last week, I think, or last meeting, which is what prompted the request. Is that the DESE had updated their guidance. Um, when they announced the return to full in person and they've been rolling out additional information. So the week of March fifteenth, they clarified the expectation that extended school year, which is an extension of this school year. Um, would need to offer both a remote and an in-person option to families. Um, whereas other new programming, the acceleration academies and other um. Some traditional summer school do not have that requirement. So um, that in order to, you know, allow the students who have been remote for this year due to health and safety reasons to remain remote through the uh summer. And so we um sent out a. Begin sending out surveys of this past week or the week before and this week. And so we sent out, began sending out surveys of this past week or the week before and this week to families to find out what their intention is to, if they would prefer to remain remote for the ESY program if they're eligible or to come in person. We have so far about 100 responses. I checked this afternoon. The majority and 100 makes it easy to say this, 90% wanted in person. So we will likely the survey stays open until next week. So I'm assuming we will be having a very small remote program this summer and the majority of students will be coming in person. As I mentioned. Um, just to give people general outline, as I've said before, this is an individual consideration for each student. So there is no set program like there is for our Title I reading or for some of the acceleration programs you've heard Dr. McNeil speak about. But in general, the program runs July 12th through August 19th, Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And then we have programs for the preschool students. They remain at Parmenter unless they're rising to kindergarten and they'll go over to the peer school where they'll be with the other elementary age students. Rising sixth graders and the current seventh graders will be at Gibbs and then rising ninth graders and 12th graders, up through 12th graders will be at the high school. And that's generally where we've been holding the programs for the last few years. Anyway, last year being the exception that we just ran one program at Pierce. And you'd asked about the timeline. So we really start planning for ESY in the fall. It's a year round consideration and we will usually hire the extended school year coordinator or coordinators. This year, Joyce Schlanger will be the ESY coordinator for the preschool. She's the monotony preschool director and has been the coordinator for several years. Annalise Abdellnor at the high school is going to be the coordinator for the elementary and secondary program. She coordinated the secondary program last year. And then in the winter is when we start to post for the staff. So Mr. Spiegel will put out posting both internally and externally to begin hiring and we're really doing that. We're continuing to do that now with the addition of the requirement for remote. We reposted because there were folks who initially didn't want to be in person and, you know, maybe interested now in doing it remote. And also we just have to, we make sure that we have enough staff and we're continuing with that process. I would say that we are, I think it's no surprise for the folks who are working in the building to say, you know, I think folks are kind of deciding if they want to break this summer or if they want to continue, you know, working through the summer. But, you know, we are hiring up until right before the program starts, usually with TAs and that, but we are in that process right now. The other thing we are doing is we have the staff or the special ed liaisons inputting the information about who, which students are eligible for ESY and what their programming is. So we can also start to build those schedules. And then, as I mentioned, the program begins July 12th. And so just want to stop briefly because I think this is what I did last year as well is just to explain the criteria for ESY because I know there's been questions about that, particularly during this pandemic year, you know, we have all talked a lot about learning loss and that, you know, all students are, you know, experiencing some regression. They've had both a break in instruction last year and this year in many cases has been somewhat abbreviated and, you know, not being in school full time. However, the criteria for ESY, which has not changed and is very specific, is to prevent substantial regret, regression and to assist in recruitment of, recruitment of skills that are being addressed in the IEP. So the understanding is that, like I said, all students will regress, but is a student likely to substantially regress in the absence of services over a break of time? That's really the standard that we're looking at. And ESY is not a replication of the school year. So if you got reading four times a week, ESY is not intended to just keep continuing like the school year. It's to prevent that backslide in skills significantly. So you may get two sessions. The recommendation would be for two sessions. So you're maintaining the skills that you have and not, you know, falling back substantially behind your peers or that would take you a long time to recoup in this, in the fall. Everyone comes back. We know the first four to six weeks of school is a lot of review and recovery for all students. You know, is a student likely to take twice as long to regain the skills they had the previous spring? So those are really the standards that we're looking at. And I've just linked where you can find that both on our website as well as the regulations. So that's kind of, you know, the big piece of it. I know you have some questions. One thing I did want to, I didn't put a slide on here. I know that Ms. Exton had a question around transportation. So transportation is something that again is individual to a student and is it's in their IEP. So if there are students who requires transportation to access their education, then they are, they get transportation to the summer program or the ESY program. We do run a bus in the summer that's open to anybody in ESY that'll stop at each of the elementary schools in the morning. So parents can drive to their neighborhood school to get picked up there, but that's not a requirement. That's just something we do. And with all of our bus runs, those are because that bus list, you know, they're making routes up to 48 hours to the start of the program is when they're going to be finalizing those lists. So I know sometimes parents aren't sure what time they're getting picked up, but that's because, you know, our director of transportation is working with his drivers to make sure that that list is up to date. It's the most efficient route going through town. Any addition that's added to that, change the route up. So folks wouldn't hear about that until 48 hours before the program were to start.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Elmer. Questions for the, from the committee about Ms. Elmer's presentation, Mr. Carden and then Ms. Exton?
Thank you. So yes, the other comment we get repeatedly year after year is not just the bus, but also confusion about, you know, which school they're supposed to go to or, or, you know, who the teacher is going to be. And I realize that a lot of those details fall into place unfortunately at the last minute, but, you know, it's great that we have the coordinators in place this early because sometimes we don't even have a coordinator. But if we could, you know, make sure, you know, we're, we're doing the best we can to make sure that families have, you know, a week notice in advance of where they're supposed to be and who their teacher will be. That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I, I will just add that, um, that the location is usually set. So I'm surprised by that feedback unless it's unclear about arising students, but we do send letters out. So we'll make sure that we do that in most timely fashion. As you said, we can have meetings up to the last day of school, an IEP meeting. So it could be decided that day that that student is eligible. So it is definitely up to the last minute, but that's important feedback. Thank you.
Ms. Exton?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I think it's really helpful for, for me as a new member in the, just the community to get a, an overview of this. One of my questions, comments was the same as Mr. Carden's. And I think just adding to that and hearing, you know, while some students might get ESY in their IEP on the last day of school, that's not true for most of the students. And so for as much as students who, who already know they're going to be eligible for ESY, the sooner that they can find out who their teacher is going to be, who their service providers are going to be. You know, I, I know you know very well that students receiving special education ESY are, you know, particularly transitions are going to be hard. New situations are going to be hard for them. New adults are going to be challenging. And so as much as the staffing is hard, I think it's really important as best as you can to give them as much notice as as possible. And then I just, I, I have a, I had a suggestion and I shared it with you before, but I also want to share it here. I think this, this information is important for families to understand and that staffing is really hard and things like that. So I just wanted to suggest potentially having some kind of either at a CPAC meeting or some other time, sharing this presentation and making sure or, or a modified one, whatever you want to do to make sure that families have an understanding of, of this process and when to expect to hear about services and transportation and, and things like that. And then my, my question is I understand that you, there's a survey at the end of ESY sent out to families every year. And I'm just curious how that information is used to improve or change or modify things the subsequent year. Thank you.
Sure. So our coordinators and we're lucky that they actually have been relatively consistent over the last three, few years. Ms. Nolan worked with Ms. Abdellnor. So there, what, you know, last year, so there was a transition between that and she was the previous coordinator. So they, they review that information, look at what that means for class sizes, you know, whether we also try to coordinate with some of the other programming that is going on in the district. So I know that one year, you know, we were able to coordinate with Mr. Coleman and his math programs that we could schedule math at the end of the day so that students who are going to stay to go to his math program were already coming in at that time. So we use that information really in the fall, as I mentioned, when we're starting to, when we hire the coordinators to really start looking in that and planning for that.
Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Allison Ampe.
Thank you. So I missed anything that was discussed last meeting. So I'm sorry, I may be repeating something, but to me it seemed, so first I agree that it's helpful to get information out as quickly as possible. But also whenever you have something like this where it is having to go later than perhaps the families would like and maybe coming out in pieces, you know, they know the program, but they don't know the best schedule and stuff. If there's a clear point person that can be contacted and, you know, maybe that the role of that person is just to say, you're right, we're working on the buses, but we've got a couple of new people and we're having to rearrange the stops or something, just so that they know they haven't missed anything and they have someone to talk to. So I'm thinking that that can make it at least more tolerable, even if they don't have the information. So, thank you.
Sure. And, and that individual would be the ESY coordinator. They're listed as the contact person for all this stuff, but, you know, we certainly get calls to our office as well and Mary Camione or Mary Morocco now will also field questions and direct them to the ESY coordinators.
Great. Anybody else? Mr. Schickman?
Admittedly, it may be off to topic, but I'd like to know what plans we have for second language learners over the summer.
That is the agenda item after the survey.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Elmer. The next item is the survey results for students and staff. This is something that Dr. McNeil presented at a CIA meeting. I don't know, weeks ago, I don't think months ago. And the direction from the subcommittee was that it would be helpful if he provided a condensed version for the full committee. So I'm glad that we're able to do this tonight. I'm working off all the last bits on my list. So this was certainly one of them that was pending. So Dr. McNeil, thank you for putting this together and we're, we're ready.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. So I'm not going to go through the slide decks because I sent it out to school committee members and it's a wealth of information. And so I'm just going to focus on some highlights from all three surveys, the student, the students in grades three through five, students in grades six to 12, and then the staff survey. And then I'll open it up for questions or comments after. And if you have questions about the, the data that you receive, I'll be happy to respond to them. So the overview for the, I want to start by, by going through the, the response rates for each one of the surveys. And let me pull up my notes right now. So the response rate for the elementary schools, which is grades three through five, all seven of the elementary schools, the average was 89%. The response rate for the middle schools, which would include Gibbs and Addison was 76.1%. And the high school response rate was 12.5%. So as you can see from those rates, the older the students are, the less of a response rate we were able to get. So when I give the, the different results, I mean, you look at the results in the slide deck that I gave you, you can kind of conceptualize, you know, what the bulk of the responses, where they came from, especially at the secondary level. So just looking at some of the highlights, I'll give the highlights, the way that I organize the slide decks is there was like six components of the survey in which students receive questions. And I'll just highlight some of those sections, those components, and I'll give the highlights under those, those different section headers. So for the student survey results, which I will use both the three through five and six through 12, looking at student relationships, some of the highlights were that 90% of the students in grades three through five reported that they can access an adult if they needed help at that moment. And then for students in grades six to 12, the it was 87% of the students reported that they can access an adult if they needed help right at that moment. Under positive feelings, which was another component of both surveys, student surveys, students in grades through five, 85% of them reported that they felt safe, which really goes to our primary goal for the year was to keep our students, you know, feeling safe, especially during the pandemic and healthy. And I think we were able to accomplish that. And that's the way that the students were feeling. 59% of the students in grades two through five felt that they, reported that they felt loved. And 69% of the students in grades two through five reported that they felt happy, which is, you know, goes to what we're trying to do with SEL and provide a safe and welcoming environment, even though we're in a pandemic and even though that we're looking at different learning models. And then, and for students in grades six to 12, 87% of the students, I'm sorry, 87% of students in grades six to, six to 12 reported that they felt safe. And 67% of the students in grades six to 12 reported that they felt loved. So you know, that definitely goes to, you know, our parents who are working in partnership with us and with the teachers and the amount of attention that they were able to provide to students despite the fact that we're in a pandemic and we're dealing with different learning models. For the component of student engagement, 82% of our students in grades three through five report that they are putting in quite a bit of effort or a great deal of effort into their classes. So that was very great to see how that students are trying very hard. And 79% of students in grade six to 12 are reporting that they're putting quite a bit of effort or a great deal of effort into their classes. So again, looking at that student engagement, making sure that we have students that are motivated to learn and it looks like, you know, based upon those results that that, that we're able to accomplish that goal. Looking at the cultural awareness and action, which was another component of both, of, of all three surveys, but for the students, we had 63% of our students in grades three through five report that their school helps students speak out against racism. And 56 of our students, percent of our students in grade six to 12, report that their school helps students speak out against racism. So that was good to see because that, you know, we're, we're definitely focusing on creating an anti-racist learning environment for all students and staff. And we made that a priority this year. And there's lots of different things that are going on within the district to address racism and prejudice. And we put a, a great deal of effort and also, you know, with our curriculum audit in order to make sure that we're providing the resources that students need in order to learn about people from different cultures. So that, that's kind of like the highlights of the student surveys. And that's not to say that, you know, we understand, you know, looking at the, the student survey results on a whole and from a comprehensive perspective that, you know, we know that there was a lot of things that we needed to focus on as we move forward. And hopefully as we give the next administration of the panorama student survey that we'll see those improvements in various areas. Moving on to the staff survey, some of the highlights. Moving on to the staff survey, some of the highlights. I would like to start with the component of well-being, which is one of the components of the survey, seventy-one percent of staff reported that they felt safe at work. Again, going back to our primary goal for this year during a pandemic, to make sure our students and staff felt safe. And I think we were able to do that. So it was very pleasing to see that staff felt safe. Ninety-six of staff, percent of staff, report that their that their work matters to them quite a bit or a tremendous amount. And so, you know, we definitely know that we have very dedicated staff and that they're very passionate about what they do. And they're very concerned about the the health and the well-being of our students. And they put forth a lot of effort in order to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Ninety-three percent of staff reported that they felt like the work that they were doing was quite meaningful or extremely meaningful. So again, going to, you know, their passion for what they're doing. And I think that's something that you can't, you can't teach that, you can't provide professional development to promote that. That is, that it has to do with our administrators and our staff working together to make sure that we're doing the best we can to make it through this pandemic and provide the best level, the highest level of quality of education to our students. So I applaud our staff for their passion and their dedication and their resolve throughout this whole entire year because it's been a very difficult year. So I have nothing but kudos for all the staff and administrators working together. Looking at cultural awareness and action, eighty-two percent of staff responded that they frequently or almost always think about students from different races, cultures and ethnicities, what they experience. And so I think that was great to see because there's a, there's definitely a will and a motivation from our staff to make sure that they are working towards developing those culturally responsive teaching practices and trying to make sure that they're thinking about their own bias and and working towards, again, a primary goal of ours to create an anti-racist learning environment for all students. So those are some of the highlights from the surveys, from all three surveys, and I'll open it up to questions and comments at this time.
This is so great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's fine.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Questions from the committee? Hold on just a second. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Dr. McNeil. We did see this at CIA, so thank you so much for doing this for all of us. Okay, the next item on the agenda is summer school and E L L, E L L summer programming, Dr. McNeil.
Yeah, so I just want to start off by saying that, again, this is something that we have put a lot of time and effort into thinking about, about how we're going to provide students who have a need access to academic support over the summer. And we're going to, we're going to, you know, our our primary goal is to replicate what we did last year. And that means that we are utilizing our Title One funds to definitely target those students that are receiving Target, I mean, Title One services throughout the year. We're using different sources of data in order to identify who those students are. And we're, you know, definitely conferring with our math interventionist, our reading specialist, our principals and teachers in order to identify those students and make sure that we have a comprehensive list. But I also want to say that we're we're going to also go beyond just offering support for our students who are currently receiving Title One services and any of those students who are not necessarily receiving Title One services in those buildings that have been identified, but also expanding into other buildings who are not necessarily receiving Title One funding. So we're trying to have a very inclusive program that's going to, you know, that's going to, you know, take in all the students that we feel that need support. So our primary focus is to definitely make sure we're offering that programming to those students. With that said, looking at some of the details of the type of program that we're going to, you know, provide is, so we're looking at to replicate what we did last year. So it would be a five-week program for literacy and math at the elementary level that will take in consideration those rising kindergarten through fifth graders. And it will be a half-day program primarily scheduled for Tuesday through Thursday. And the groups will be, you know, around four or five. And then, you know, looking at what we're trying to do right now is we're trying to identify staff in order to, who are interested in teaching in that program. And we're also, we've sent out invitations to those students who have been identified, to those families, to see whether or not they would be interested in sending their kids to the program. And so we're also trying to ask, take in consideration what we did last year by offering a remote part of this program, a version of it. So we want to make sure that we're taking out any types of barriers that may be there for our students and provide access. So we're looking at an in-person and remote version of it. Trying to make sure that we're doing in-person as much as possible, but understanding that there may be families who still might want to have the remote version. So again, it's a five-week program, Title One Extended, Title One Program, I would call it, replicating what we did last year at the elementary level, be K through five, and it would take and it would focus on math and literacy. Looking at the middle school level, which we also offered a middle school program last year, again, a five-week program. Right now, we're talking to our middle school principals in order to identify, you know, staff and students that could take advantage of this program. And so we're really in the planning phases at the middle school level and the high school level. So that's where we are. But we're going to definitely work to to offer something very similar to what we did last year. And so I will be coming out with more information within the next couple of weeks in order, as we solidify these plans. At the middle school level, we have meetings planned for next week. And then we also have to work with our high school principals for the credit recovery program, which will be primarily be the the way that we're going to offer the support for students who need that that credit recovery over the summer. So I'll open it up for questions and comments right now.
Thank you, Dr. McNeil. Questions for Dr. McNeil? Mr. Schickman?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I forgot the E L L. I'm so sorry. E L L, we are trying to offer a program, a comprehensive program over the summer. We've, I, you know, we're working to identify a space. And I'm sorry, Mr. Schickman, I totally forgot, so I'm going to definitely, so I'm working with Ms. Busacy, who is our director of E L L. And she's right now seeing what teachers are available in order to staff the program. But I will say it's very challenging after this year because as as we ran into the same, you know, the same issue last year, we had teachers that were just, you know, they just didn't have the bandwidth in order to work in a summer program. So we're kind of running into the same issue this year. Again, we're we're looking at trying to maybe definitely starting with prior prioritizing an in-person program. But if we think that staff are more willing to do it in a remote version, we're definitely going to keep that open. So we're, you know, reaching out to families right now to see who's interested and also trying to see what what staff members we have interested.
I I I just want to say, to my mind, there's nothing more critical than providing summer services to English learners. Because they do not have the opportunity for high-level English interactions at home because they're coming from a second language environment. We, it is essential, we cannot go this year and say, well, nobody wanted to do it. If we don't have the staff in Arlington, we have to go and recruit elsewhere. We've got to make this program run because this is a critical, critical group of students. So I would urge the leadership here to not only identify space, identify space quickly, but make quick identification of which teachers are able to do it from within our staff. And if we don't have staff in Arlington that's able to do it, that we need to go out and hire and recruit. Because we must have this program. This is the most essential program, summer program in my mind. And I just don't want to see it fall apart again this year.
Well, I I don't want to say that it fell apart last year. We did have a version of it. It was not a as comprehensive, but we did have staff work with students in small groups remotely. And they did meet with them throughout the summer. I I share your same concern. But I also want to make sure that the the individuals that we're putting in front of our students are also qualified and able to provide the level of support and the quality of education that we're looking for. So I understand what you're saying and we're doing the best that we can in order to recruit a staff to do so. And we will definitely think outside the box and try to, if we have to go outside the district, we will. But again, I, even if you go outside the district, I don't know how many people you're going to get to be to work in the summer program as at, you know, at this point in time. So I just want to make sure that I'm, I understand and I share your same concern. And we're doing the best that we can in order to staff these programs.
I mean, if you need to come back to us if we need more money to run this thing, to attract teachers, if we need incentives, if whatever we need to get this running. I I I want to push for it and I want to make sure that we don't do anything as a school committee that's a barrier having a world-class second language learner program over the summer.
No, I I know the schools committee has always been very supportive when we've asked for resources. And so that's not the barrier. And it's not a funding source, it's not a funding. It literally is, this year has been very, very difficult. And I just want to make sure that I'm I'm saying that for our teachers and that, you know, we want our teachers to come into the fall refreshed and ready to go through because next year is going to be just as challenging. So I understand what you're saying, but I also understand what teachers are going through because I hear them. And I and I, we meet with them and we, I talk to them and I understand what they're going through. So this is not because, like I said in the survey, they want to do it. It's the fact that whether or not they have the bandwidth to do it over the summer.
No, I understand this. I really do understand this. I've taught, I've run summer programs, I've worked in summer programs. It it's exhausting. And if the summer program goes too late into the year, you really don't have enough time to decompress between the time of the end of the summer program and coming back to school in September. I understand all of this, but if we don't have the capacity within the district, maybe we also need to make sure that we have more E L L staff so that we have greater capacity, lessen the burden during the year, have people who are more refreshed and more able to go work the summer. Because this is, to me, this is our biggest priority right now over the summer.
Absolutely, it is. It is. And with all due respect, I understand that you have experience, but I don't think any of us have experienced working through a pandemic before. So I do want to make sure that that is a variable that's different than any other given year because any other given year, we haven't had a challenge of recruiting staff to work in the summertime.
Yeah, I I understand that. I really do. But I'm also looking at those kids and this is, this is, this is a cohort that need more intensive, more focused English instruction because that's what's going to get, move them forward within our system.
Um, so Dr. Allison Nippe, and then, but I have a question first. So for Dr. McNeil and maybe Mr. Spiegel, what are our, what is our ability or capacity to be flexible around salary for these summer positions? What are our, like, what are our obligations? And how can we make it more, potentially more desirable?
Can I just say that it's not a salary thing? It really isn't. I mean, I think that, and if, you know, if Jenna can chime in here, I I really would like to have her, you know, share some understanding as what we're talking, it's not a funding, it's not funding, it's not salary. We can offer all the money in the world, but if people are burned out, they're burned out. And I just want Jenna, could you please provide some insight to this?
Yeah, what what's going through my mind is when I, I also read your slide deck that you sent to the staff this afternoon. And there was a question about how often did you feel exhausted at work? And I think it was something like eighty-nine percent felt, you know, at least somewhat, or I don't remember exactly what the, um, but it was a huge number of staff feeling exhausted. And, you know, I'm looking at, I'm going to do some summer fund stuff, but this year, I can't, I can't put into words how different this year is in terms of looking into the summer and kind of what we need to get ready for next year. So I appreciate Dr. McNeil bringing that up and I absolutely share the concern for our E L L students. I mean, I just, I know that districts doing the best they can.
So, so we don't have, like, I mean, there, there are, generally speaking, there are, there are dollar amounts where people will make different decisions. Like, that's just how people, like, eventually that there comes that place. So I hope that if, you know, if this is really a priority, and certainly there's no obligation that any of our teachers choose to do this this summer. But we can continue to incentivize it if it is really a priority and if we're going, you know, going to continue to spend money on it. There are ways to make it more appealing for people. If, and if we can do that, I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Schickman that it should be something that that, you know, that we try to do. So, Dr. Allison Ampe and then Ms.
Thank you. So a couple of things. One, I totally understand about burnout and can guess that that's how many, many people are, I mean, many, many of our teachers and staff are feeling right now. So I would wonder if there's any way that we can play with the schedule where, like, they're only teaching half of a program. You have people doing team teaching. One person teaches the first two and a half weeks, the second person teaches the second two and a half weeks. So they're both not doing the full thing. And second, whether, I don't know our numbers, but whether we could combine with another district and maybe both bring staffing in and be able, you know, maybe they're having problems too, but they can put together half a program, we can put together half a program, bring all the students together and and do that. Anyway, just trying to come up with some other ideas to help us achieve the goal. But the other question I have, and I'm going to have to start driving, so I'm just going to be listening. When I read the D E S I, the new D E S I guidance, to me, it seemed to suggest that all students, not just these students who definitely are are in high need, but that all students receive as much in-person learning during the summer. And I was wondering, is there somewhere else where they make it more clear that it's just referring to special education students, E L L, Title One, et cetera? Or is it really everybody?
It it is everybody. And we're thinking outside the box and how to provide, you know, activities. And so we're thinking of like for our, you know, for enrichment. So what I hear you talking about is the enrichment, what can we offer to the students who aren't struggling, who are progressing typically and or above? So we're looking at for literacy, coming up with like an activity calendar, activities calendar, you know, definitely looking at our enrichment page and very having very targeted, specific, you know, activities that students can access over the summer, they'll have their Chromebook and that we have our online platforms that we have invested in that will be made available. And our licenses go from August to August. But I think that, you know, again, as I talked to you about us having problems staffing, you know, the program for students that are in high need of support over the summer. I don't want us to compete against ourselves in offering an enrichment program. And then you have staff that you would, you know, so we have the priority, we have to have priorities. And so right now, our priority is to provide staffing for our students who are in need. And then definitely considering our our students who are, who would like to have enrichment and then providing them with resources that they can access over the summer that doesn't necessarily rely upon, you know, having a staff member. We're thinking outside the box again. We're saying maybe we can have a check-in once a week with a staff member, you know, after they do some of the activities and they can, you know, summarize what, you know, the students have accomplished during the week. So we're trying to think outside the box in many different ways and also be very respectful of our teachers who have gone through a lot this year. And like Jenna pointed out, our staff survey has Our staff survey has has shown that. And so when I go into buildings, I think the one thing our teachers want us to be able to just amplify over and over again is how much we appreciate them. And knowing that, you know, they've put, they put it all in the all and they let they left nothing, they left nothing on the field. I mean, everything they 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 left it on the field, you know, this year, they really have. And so. You know, we definitely are, you know, trying to reach out to teachers and make sure that we have these programs available for our students.
Okay, I wasn't necessarily just talking about enrichment and stuff. I think this year. A lot of students may not be at where they might have expected to be at the end and. But not necessarily falling into the really need summer, I mean. That we would ordinarily have considered them for summer school. Anyway, I was trying to understand the DSE guideline guidance. And what it's trying to say and whether there was something else um about it, but. I'll let someone else ask questions now. Thank you.
Dr. Bodie.
We certainly want to have students supported this summer. That that's a that's a given. Uh, DSE guidance um is is asking districts to to figure out how you can do that. One of the things that we have, we have a lot of assessments. That we are able to determine where students are in terms of benchmarks in these two important areas of literacy and math. And um, one of the things that we're looking at with the with this summer programming is to look at the students first. Who have not, that maybe not a benchmark. Um, you know, the, we do know where kids could be, should be at this time of the year. So we, and I think you're suggesting Dr. Allison Happy as a great one because uh about the the schedule, you know, having the smaller. Um, you know, maybe less time that a a weeks that would be committed. That that may, we've looked at that actually, and that's a possibility. We'll just have to see if that's workable. The um. The issue is that we we're actually trying to maybe do a little bit too much, to be honest. Um, the the Department of Education does not require uh for any program except for E S Y. If you offer remote and you offer in person. Last year, we had a lot of success with the remote, but I think um. I think this year, i- if we were to lean toward either one of them, it would be go to in person because I I think we all understand that we've had a lot. Screen time for our students, in particular, the students that may not be a benchmarks. They they need more of the in person. So. That has been the priority. We're going to have a program similar to last year. We're going to identify those students and if we have additional. Capacity, we certainly would open up a little wider. I think one of the things that. Uh, we've talked about before, but the platforms we have bought for the district that would be available. Actually are excellent in helping students um with review. Um, a particular note is our math one dream box. And that we're going to make that available for all students this summer. Now. It requires some level of parents saying you need to do, you know, your your half hour or several times a week. You know, it's different, obviously, than saying, okay, you've got to be at school from, you know, nine o'clock to to eleven thirty, twelve o'clock. It it is different and I realize it's putting more on parents to make sure the students do that, but um. I think the one thing we've learned this year is we have a very. Um, supportive and uh parents that will really um take advantage of that this summer. So. I I we do lean for the in person. I know Dr. McNeil would like to have remote. And it's just really a question whether we have the 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 staffing to do both. But our first priority is in person. And um, I think as, I think we can give you an update as we go along. Um, and we 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 actually do pay our teachers very well. I will also point out that Summer Fund is an Arlene Public School program and um. There are lots of programs that we offer in that in Summer Fund, which which is of an enrichment nature. Um, so I just want to, I I think we're going to have, it's hard to say. Um, how many people will have, we've had very high numbers, thousands of thousands of registrations in the past. Um, doesn't mean that we have thousands of kids every day. It's just the number of students that have take advantage of this. Um. So we will look at whether a reduced schedule can work in attracting teachers, but the main thing is. We want to make sure we have the summer programming, both for our students who are not a benchmark. Our ELL students, and of course, we're going to have E S Y.
So let let me also say that there are teachers that are leaning towards the remote option. Uh, as opposed to being in person. So, you know, again, we're having, you know, we're reaching out to teachers and and trying to figure out what we can do. In order to have them work uh on a consistent basis and work with the students. So. You know, like Dr. Bodie said, we're trying to consider in person, but we know that we might have to. Offer that remote option, which I indicated earlier in my summary. Um, so I I just want to make sure that I put that in there. And I also want to, I want to add that. You know, myself, Matt Coleman and Deb Perry, we met with Jen Rothenberg. Who runs the Summer Fund program in order to see what we could do. And in order to partner with Summer Fund in order to offer some of the classes for like for the enrichment part. And and I and I'm only saying enrichment because I know that some students may not be where they normally would be. But for the learning loss that happened during the pandemic, and again, we're using all the different. Um, metrics we have in order to have a very comprehensive list. But that was also problematic because she has a program that she's trying to run. And, you know, we were all going to even say that we'll, you know, do something with the fees. In order to lessen the the burden on parents. But again, it was, it was, it was space and again, it's competing against each other for. Um, you know, the 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 students. And so we didn't want to take away from her program. She did say that we could utilize some of the internal structures that she has. You know, as it relates to, you know, the administration, things that have to happen when you offer a summer program. But she suggested that we offer it outside the dates of Summer Fund. So we have tried to. Think about all different options and I and I'm I'm still going to continue to try. I'm just giving you an overview of where we are right now and maybe in a couple of weeks that will change. So I just want to make sure that we're going to continue to work. Mr. Schlipman, we're going to continue to try to make sure that we look at all different alternatives. For all students because we definitely know how important it is.
Anybody else for Dr. McNeil, Mr. Thielman and then Ms. Exton?
Thank you. Um, so for the ELL program, how many uh, I mean, how many teachers would you need to hire?
Well, we we normally, I think we're between four and five to run a comprehensive program.
Okay, so um, and uh. And and for the summer enrichment program that we ran last year, how many teachers did we hire?
You mean for the Title One Extended Program?
Yeah, the Title One Extended Program.
For the K five, we're looking, we 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 ran about, I have to look back, but we had uh four groups a day. For um E L A. And uh I have to look back for math, um, but it was, it was, it ended up being um. Around nine. Uh, we're looking to hire between math and E L A.
So we're looking to hire. Somewhere around twenty teachers or twenty teachers or so for the summer. Is that about right?
It's even more than that because we are looking at offer a middle school program. So. You know, we're trying to, I can't give you the, I can, I can, I don't want to give you inaccurate numbers. I will. I I can get that information to you. I can email it to you as to the number that we actually need to run, like what we ran last year. And I didn't, I didn't do a, I didn't, um, I will, I can get the information that we. The number of staff that we had in our program from last year and I can send that to you.
Okay, we we good to know the numbers. Um, I mean, my thinking is between the American Recovery Act money that. Is is supposedly designated to city, to states and then to uh communities for summer programming, plus any. Funding we may have that is not used in our budget, there there may be enough money to um. You know, offer some very competitive, highly competitive uh uh wages to the twenty-five or thirty teachers in from our district or outside of my district. Who might want to teach this summer. So I I think this is a solvable problem, given the funding that we have in our budget and the funding. That is supposed to be available through the American uh Rescue Plan, I guess, the Recovery Act or Rescue Plan, whatever President Biden signed a few weeks ago. Um, with that an acronym. I I mean, I I I think there's the funding available to solve the problem. I understand recruiting twenty-five or thirty teachers to do that over the summer is a challenge. You know, hiring talented personnel anytime to do anything is always uh. You know, recruiting and finding people is always a challenge in any organization at any time, but. We may have the money to provide incentive to to hire people. Uh, that's all I want to say. I just want to kind of point that out. There may be the resources here to solve this problem. And I I think we can do that if we use federal state, uh federal and our money.
Absolutely, and I hope that you're right. And like I said, we're going to continue to offer those incentives to teachers. Uh, in order to attract them into the program. And I know that Mr. Spiegel is probably thinking, well, we also have to make sure that we're. Um, being, you know, have an equitable, what we offer that, you know, we have the E S Y program and we have other programs, so we don't want to. You know, overcompensate in one program, which will make it inequitable for other programs. So I just want to point that out, but. We do have a a fee structure that we follow. And if we need to sweeten the pot, I'm sure that we can do so. And I'll have to work with Mr. Spiegel in order to make sure that. You know, we're doing it in in line and and not trying to, again, you know, uh. Pull staff from another program, um, because we are competing all for the same resources.
Yeah, I I get that. I I get that. We don't, I mean, there has to be equity between all the program programs, but I think you can use the funding, district funding plus American. Rescue Plan money to gather to pay everybody the same and pay them more.
Absolutely, which 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 that type of funding allowed us to go beyond our normal Title One programming from last year. And so that's why we were able to have an extended Title One program last year because and have a very extensive offering from last year. Um, because we did take advantage of those funds. So I just want to point that out. So thank you for. Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
And at some point in time, it would be good for us, for the district, for the school committee to understand. What what we're eligible to get from the from the federal government with this new new plan.
Absolutely. I appreciate this suggestion and we'll, like I said, we're going to continue to, you know, speak with teachers and uh. Try to make sure that we can find out what incentives and what, how can we structure the program so they they will participate.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm.
Uh, Ms. Exton and then Mr. Schickman. So I I I appreciate how much you're supporting the teachers and how um. Tiring and exhausting this year has been. I also agree with um. My committee members that if there's a way to increase the pay to incentivize teachers. Um, or others to 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 teach in this program this summer, I would support that. I have, I just have some questions about the sort of the goals of the programming and some of this is to help the community understand. And then some of this is to help sort of the the parity between E S Y um and and this Title One Extension Program. So as Ms. Elmer said, E S Y is very clearly by law um to prevent substantial regression. What are? What are we, what are the goals or what are we looking at for this Title One programming in terms of? Of our students? Is it to prevent more regression from where students are now? Or are we really trying to close? A gap of where they are compared to a benchmark and we want to move them toward that benchmark during the summer program?
Absolutely. So we have, we have, we have to be very careful when we talk about, you know, the different goals of the different programs. So I appreciate your question. So. You know, the way I like to talk about it and the way we talk about it with the curriculum leaders and the administrators who are running the program is targeted instruction. So, you know, collecting the data, understanding, getting that profile of that student, understanding where they need the support. And being able to provide that support and identify those skills that they need in order to move them forward. And and get them prepared uh and and to close the gap. You know, a- again, within that inherently is that you're going to prevent regression. But you're also, you know, want to target those students in those small groups in order to identify the skills that they need. In order to move forward uh with their understanding of the content. So it's definitely. You know, preventing regression at the same time of trying to move them forward.
So I guess my follow-up question to that is, and I don't know if this is to Ms. Elmer or to you, Dr. McNeil, um. This is a little nuanced, but for a student who um receives special education, may or may not qualify for E S Y. But is not meeting their benchmark, for example, in reading, and it may or may may not be due to their disability. Are they being considered for the Title One program? Would they, just how does that um come together?
So that's a very good question. So we have reading specialists. We have math interventionists that provide general education support throughout the year. And our reading specialists see students on an I E P and they also see students in the general education. A career, you know, in the general education program. So we are, like I said before, we're looking at. Those students who are already receiving Title One services and we have, I we have identified buildings that receive Title One funding. And then because of the funding that uh Mr. Thielman pointed out, we're able to go beyond our Title One uh schools and extend it. So we're also looking at those students who are receiving math interventionist and reading uh support throughout the year. And those, they, that may be the profile of student that you just described. A student who may be on an I E P or have a goals and objectives in a different area, but they also may be struggling in reading. And so they're not receiving, you know, special education support for their reading, but they're seeing a reading specialist. And so, you know, we're trying to definitely, you know, like I said before, offer what we off, you know, provided last year and the same. Um, with with the same intensity because last year was very successful. And um, we had a lot of students participate, you know, probably because the, you know, the camps were closed or people are feeling some anxiety about sending their students to a camp. Um, there's lots of different variables, but we had a very high participation rate. And I do believe it was partly because we were offer offering it remotely as well. So with the combination of people not wanting to send their kids to camp and also the remote, we were able to get a high participation rate.
Great. Thank you. I hope you can staff this because I think it's an important uh program. Thank you.
I I do as well, and I want everybody to know that that's our goal is to staff this program and replicate what we did last year.
Uh, Mr. Schifman?
Yeah, I just want to put for the record for us to be thinking. As we look at the uh A E A contract for next year. Sounds to me like we should be exploring uh adding some eleven-month teaching positions. Into the contract and into the budget so that we have a secure source of highly qualified teachers. Who are committed to working a a summer program uh in either special ed or particularly in the in in E L. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Carden?
Thanks and uh thank you, Dr. McNeil, for all the efforts. Um. My my main concern is that um, you know, there's there's lots to talk about summer school. You know, the president mentioned it, um, the governor has mentioned it. Uh, the DSE guideline is guidelines are pretty vague and and I'm a little concerned that there's going to be another. Requirement coming down and another pivot required. Um, and and I. I don't know what the demand is in the community for summer school. And, and I, I don't know what the demand is in the community for summer school. But I, I do think that we should be building as big of a program as we possibly can. You know, people will start hearing about it from this meeting and from, from, hopefully from their principals. You know, that, that people are being selected for this program. But what if, what if my child is, has not been selected? And I think they've fallen behind. What are my options? So I, you know, besides just doing Dream Box on their own. You know, again, I understand that our staff is exhausted. But I, I do think we need to, to look as big as we possibly can. And I think you're hearing that message, you know, across the board. Thank you.
Yes, I, and I agree with you. I want to make sure we offer something for all students. But I want to also point out, we're not doing anything different as it relates to the title. We are doing something different as it relates to the Title One. If this was not a pandemic year and we weren't getting the federal funds, we utilize the Title One money for those Title One schools to have, you know, this Title One programming. So I want to, I want the community to know we, that's exactly what we did last year. We went as big as we thought we needed to go. And that's what I'm trying to replicate. When we send out those invitations, that's, that's regular. That's what we do normally in a non pandemic year. But this year, as we did last year, we're also sending invitations to students, to, to students and buildings that have not been identified to receive Title One funding. So I, I definitely agree with you. And I just want to point out that that's exactly what we're doing. That's what we're trying to dream as big as we can. But we know we, we also have to make sure that we're, we're staffing it with the, with the, you know, the right people who can provide the, the level of instruction that we're looking to provide for our students.
Great, thank you.
All right, anybody else? So seeing none, Dr. Bodie, your superintendent's report. Thank you, Dr. McNeil.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you for all the suggestions. We're, we're going to keep plugging away with this and, and I will, you know, as we have certain successes and I will keep you updated as to where we are.
Great, Dr. Bodie?
Well, first of all, I, I just wanted to report on this week. This was a another major pivot week in the Arlington Public Schools and the elementary. And, and I would have to say that it's gone very smoothly. There's been, you know, certainly, there's always some bumps along the way as you adjust to perhaps schedules not working quite the way you thought and you, you change, which seems to be the way of this year. But overall, it, it's really gone very smoothly. And I do want to acknowledge our administrators and our teachers and staff who really worked hard to make that the case. So oh, next week we have a, another week and then we'll be moving into the secondary. So going from there, I want to talk about the, where we are with the high school project. The building committee met on this last Tuesday and approved a, a number of a, a number of what they call owner approved letters with regard to contractors for the project. Right now, we have, that's 97% complete. So when we go out for steel or we go out for tiles, any of those are for the entire project, not for just the steam wing or the performing arts. So in terms of the orders, really they've done a remarkable job as to where we are. One of the, one of the approvals that was given by the building committee was to have terrazzo floors through the entire, you know, the entrance from Mass Ave as well as the entrance from the back of the school, actually we'll call it the field side of the school and, and through the cafeteria. So that was one of the major amounts that were approved, which it all becomes several hundred thousand dollars. The all, all, it's really moving along quite well. It's on schedule, it's, it's on budget. So no concerns in that respect. I will say however, that the hours that people are on the job, even during the weekday as well as Saturdays, has been increased to make sure that we meet the scheduled date in which we can move into both of the, the new additions. And one of the reasons for needing to have extra hours is some of the delays that happen initially with, with steel. And, you know, honestly, there was not much that our contractor or our O P M could do about that. So, but the plan is to make sure that we, we have, we continue to have the February 11th, 2022 as the date that we will complete Phase One, which are the two buildings that are being constructed on the, on front field. So the other thing I will report about the high school is that we have chosen colors. Finalized that this week and they're, they're mainly neutrals through the whole school. In the steam wing, we're going to stick with a, a series of blues that go through the different floors and the ideas have a different blues and it's, it's a way of knowing where you are, which is something that was highly suggested by our disability commission for one thing, as well as our architects. When we move to the humanities wing, that's going to be in other tone, warmer tones of the maroons to sort of a layer orange to a yellow. So it's going to be more in the warmer tones. But, you know, we have made, we have moved along in that respect. Which is sort of significant, actually. And I remember when we did Thompson, it took us actually a lot longer time with the colors there than it's taken us with the high school. But I think people around the interiors committee are, and are quite pleased and the colors were presented to the, the whole building committee this last Tuesday with some modifications since then. So the other thing I will report, we're still working on technology. We're still working on furniture and equipment. But that is also moving along. The one thing I would also encourage people to look at are the videos that we have on the, on the website there. Our contractor consistently has been working with the communications subcommittee to sort of stay up to date with, with the project. So that, that's where we are right now. The next meeting of the building committee is in early May, May 4th and actually before, I really don't have much more. I just want to report on athletics. I don't know if there's any questions or comments that Mr. Thielman or Dr. Allison Ampe would have who are, who are the members on the building committee.
Dr. Bodie led the effort to select the colors for the Thompson. They came out great. She led the effort to collect the, select the, and does much more than just this, but the colors.
The high school is much different. It's going to be very, it's going to be very elegant and very, much more subdued. It's a high school.
Yes.
And it's a community center. So it's very different.
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm complimenting you. I mean, yeah, yes, no, I mean, yeah, Dr. But yeah. So I would say, yes, the Dr. Bodie summed up the meeting and where we're at really well. We have more terrazzo tile, which is a very nice thing and good thing for, for, it's, it's, it's a service that lasts longer and is actually better for the ambiance of the building. And the, 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 the colors that Dr. Bodie and her committee picked out are wonderful. And we continue to be very excited about the project. I, I can't add anything more to it. First, Dr. Allison Ampe probably has more to add. She has her.
She's got her hand up though.
Oh.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, yeah.
Okay, great. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that the colors that Dr. Bodie is talking about are only the accent colors. The main colors for the floors, the walls are more neutral. The accent colors will be found in areas around the light wells, which will be kind of the pop of color in this whole big classroom space. I mean, the whole big hallway space. And I think around the lockers and stuff, I, we've had pictures and then there'll be like one accent wall in each of the classrooms with these different colors depending on which wing. So I didn't want people to hear this and think, oh my God, there's going to be like a whole blue hallway or blue classroom or.
Well, thank you. That, that's actually a great clarification. I should have said that, that these are accent colors. The, the tone of the whole school is really neutrals. Some beiges, light grays, it's, it's, but you can't have the entire building being neutrals. You need some kind of color and and, and, and so these are exactly right. So if everybody, we should probably come back to the committee sometime and show these diagrams. These are very, the light wells are quite large. They're elliptical. And I think on the longest, of, of the longest part of it, if you can think of an ellipse, to think of something like 24 feet is quite large, but it's still an accent color just to give, give some color to the building. But it's going to be, you know, generally very subdued.
I just want to state for the record that I contributed absolutely nothing to the color discussion. I have no talent, nothing to add. It was Dr. Bodie and her committee. They did all the work. They got the gifts for it. I'm serious. They're very, very good at this color thing. So.
Well, yeah, thank you. I, I'm, that, that's also good and not that, you know, if people don't like a particular one that you're, you're, you're you're absolved from this, but I.
I know, I like it. I'm going to defend it. I'm going to defend it.
I know you will. I think it's actually going to be quite lovely. And Dr. Allison Ampe is on the interiors committee and one thing I will say is that there was high levels of agreement on the colors and what we eventually were given to a high level. People didn't like a particular color and it was pretty much universal. So what I think we ended up with is not ended up with, but what was finally decided upon, I think people are going to be very happy with. All right, the last thing is our athletic program. As you know, we've had four seasons this year and the Boston Globe and the Herald. They call it the Boston Globe and Boston Herald all scholastic. We've had a, a number of students that have been, been honored in, in that. And I just, I would like to mention their names and what they were honored for. And each of the seasons will have these designations. So the Boston Globe and Boston Herald all scholastic hockey a team was Maddie Kropalka. And then there are three honorable mentions. For the girls Alpine skiing team, there was Catherine Clusterman. For the boys Alpine skiing team, we had Orin Avra Hymen, I missed pronouncing it, Avra Hamey. And for the girls basketball team was Claire Ewan. For the Boston Herald all scholastic hockey dream team, we had Shay O'Day. So I want to congratulate these students. They really represented Arlington High School very well. And from what I understand from my athletic director, these were well deserved honors. So congratulations to them. Thank you. And that's, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bodie. Any questions? Mr. Schickman?
I want to get back to the high school. I heard February 11th as a, a opening date for Phase One, the front of the building. Can, you know, I have a brief understanding of the logistics that will occur around February vacation to move from the current building into the front and any impacts on teaching and learning that might come as a result.
Well, that is certainly part of the planning that will go on. Some of the moving will actually start taking place a little, whatever we can will take place before that. Certainly all new furniture is coming to these buildings. So that will already be in the buildings before the, before the actual move over the February break. But the, to your point, which I think is a really important one, we want to make sure that we minimize or not have any disruption to student learning. So I think initially the hope was this could have happened over the December break into, you know, to the first of the year, but it really needs a little bit more time. So the, the goal is the February vacation that, that next year.
So we, we, we're for parents of high school students looking forward to what will happen in February, as far as they, they're concerned, sending the kid to school, getting the kid back home. It's going to be seamless and there, there's really, you know.
I hope, I hope so. I hope that it will be seamless. There's certainly a, a lot of planning that will go on as we, you know, we get through the summer and have a better idea. But the this is going to require a lot of teaming with the contractor and the high school administration. But I have a lot of confidence that that will actually be as seamless as possible. The, the, it's, it's not even the move into the building. It's also the moves in, in the school itself. So what will happen after students start using that, the, the seating wing and the performing arts is that we're going to start having abatement that's going to happen in the calm house. That's a, that's the, the, the front of the entrance, the both ends architecture. That whole building is going to be demolished. So any programs, any, any teachers or programs that are, that are in that building will be moved to the Downs building. So it's in the seam, of course, it's science, math, technology or arts program. But for example, the lab program will go to Downs. And so there's going to be a reshuffling that's going to have to take place as well. And that's part of phasing.
So maybe we could do, once Mr. Hayner takes on his chair, maybe we could have a, a, an agenda item around this so that people can understand where we're at.
Can I make a point on that if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Thielman.
Yeah, so this, the Harley, the High School Building Committee has a temporary use phasing subcommittee. And so that Dr. Jangor, Dr. Bodie, the, the construction team, they're all on that subcommittee. And they are talking about this issue. And, you know, we don't have a final plan yet. They'll have a final plan at some point. When they're ready to report, I think that's an appropriate time to bring someone from that committee, probably Dr. Jangor, and maybe someone from the design team to the school committee to give a report, but they're not, they're not ready yet.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
As, as long as there's nothing that we need to worry about in terms of our planning to run school next year at this point.
No, but no, because the, I mean, that, that subcommittee is well represented by school, by the school administration. They're all involved in this whole discussion with the design team. So I think it would be good to have that committee, probably Dr. Jangor from that group, report out sometime to the school committee in the fall. When, so Mr. Hayner can make a note of that and. Yeah.
Okay, because I'm really excited about this. I'm watching this building go up and they're putting in the walls and, and doing, it, it's going to be wonderful. And I, and I'm just sort of excited about the next steps of moving forward and into the new building and proceeding with the next phase. It's, it's, it's glorious. I'm, I'm, I'm just so pleased with the work that's going on. And thank you to the building committee folks for making it so easy on our end.
Yeah, it hasn't been that, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else for Dr. Bodie's report? All right, seeing none. The consent agenda, all items listed with an asterix are considered, excuse me, to be routine will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests. In which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant for approval, warrant dated 3/30/2021, warrant number 21215. Total warrant amount $736,524.04 minutes for approval. School committee regular meeting, March 25th, 2021. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Can you pull the minutes, please?
So just the warrant.
Move to approve is presented.
Second. Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schiffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
I am also yes. So now I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes for the regular school committee meeting on March 25th, 2021.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Dr. Allison Ampe?
I'm marked both present and absent. I should be absent last week. If you read it, it it's the top, it says I'm present, and then it says I'm absent. I was absent. I'm going to abstain. Thank you.
So we can approve the minutes as amended by Dr. Allison Ampe during her absenteeism. Great. Any more discussion on these minutes? Seeing none, Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Abstain.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schiffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. A policy BEDB agenda format prep and dissemination and JKAA, physical restraint of students second read. Mr. Schiffman, do you want to let us know where we're at with this?
Where I move approval of BEDB.
Second.
Discussion? All right, seeing none. Ms. Exton? No. Mr. Carden?
No.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
No.
Mr. Thielman?
No.
Mr. Schiffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I'm also a no. Um. And the other one?
I move approval of JK. Move approval of JKAA.
Second.
A discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Exton? Yes, Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schiffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
And I am also yes. Okay, subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, budget, Dr. Allison Ampe?
Budget will be meeting on Monday. On the agenda is the discussion of some financial record requests from finance committee, not. There's not concerns that we. Did anything that that there was any impropriety there. There is. Mr. Foskett, who is Chair of the Finance Committee, made a presentation on Monday, past Monday. Basically saying that he thinks the schools are have been overfunded, and he went over a bunch of things. And we're going to discuss our response to that. I personally felt that some of the numbers and such that he presented were not actually correct. And so that's part of what we'll be pulling together. So this is, we will be having our disc. Oh, the other thing is that Mr. Carmen, also from the Finance Committee, who's our FinCom rep, will be there, and I think maybe some other. Finance Committee members, they're tasked with. Helping come up with the answers to these things. There will be. The education budget discussed more on Wednesday night. And then there'll be a long range plan meeting on Friday, and. All these topics are going to be. Of interest and are potentially of interest to other members of the committee. So I want to be sure that you all are aware of this. And because we're not going to have another regular school committee meeting in in this time. So if you are interested, follow along with budget. And pipe in then. So, thank you.
Mr. Schiffman?
Uh, can we make sure that the Mr. Foskett's presentation is in the novice? For next Monday's budget meeting, so we can see what.
Will do.
Thank you.
Community relations, Mr. Hayner?
Last Saturday, the school committee chat was with the ELL parents. We had 15 different parents. It was a good turnout, good discussion. This Saturday will be the focus will be on K to five parents. Thank you.
CIA, Mr. Carden?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Facilities, Mr. Thielman?
Report.
Policy, Mr. Schiffman?
No report, thank you.
High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman?
We discussed it.
Liaison reports. Dr. Allison Ampe?
I'm not a liaison report. I'm going back to budget. I'm sorry, I didn't have notes. I forgot to say that in between our last meeting, we had the Finance Committee presentation, and I wanted to commend. Mr. Mason and Dr. Bodie. It was a very well done presentation. It was very well received, not everything Mr. Foskett is doing notwithstanding. And. It I just wanted to be sure that the rest of you knew that. So that's all.
Other liaison reports. Announcements, Mr. Hayner?
I just want to say publicly that you're going to be a hard act to follow.
Thank you. Future agenda items. All right, seeing none. We are not having executive session, motion to adjourn.
I want to thank the chair for a great year. I want to thank the chair for an awesome year.
I think Kathy want, do you want executive session, Kathy?
Oh.
I I I did, actually. On here, sorry about that.
It's on here. I just it's often on here, and we just blow right by it. So we are going to executive session.
It's very short one.
Uh, so executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and or non-union personnel or contract negotiations with union and or non-union in which if held an open meeting. May have a detrimental effect, principal contracts to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, which if held an opening meeting may have a detrimental effect, collective bargaining. May also be conducted.
So moved.
Back again.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes, and are we returning afterwards?
We're not. We're not coming back. Thank you, though. Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schiffman?
Yes.
Mr. Hayner?
Yes.
I am also yes. All right.